All right, this six o'clock city council meeting will come to order. I'm Councilmember Colin Nash. I'll be filling in for Mayor Lauren McLean this evening. Uh, we'd like to get the meeting started with a moment of silence, uh, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Halliburton, did you want to say anything before a moment of silence?
Sure. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, I think coming off of, of last week, my mind really has been thinking a lot about, about the shooting that we saw in Georgia, another shooting that we saw in Maryland. And we start these meetings off with a moment of silence and really it's sort of to take the time to think about whatever it is that you need to think about. I think this is certainly something that's on a lot of folks' minds right now, how we respond to it, how we act on it, and how we sort of move forward. Uh, I want to make sure that during my particular time that I'm honoring the families, honoring the victims, and then honoring all the other people in the community who are impacted by things like this when it happens. It's not just the folks that are closest, but it's sort of the cascading impact as well. And so that's all I'll be using my time tonight. I might know some other council members will be doing the same, and I would encourage folks in here to do the same as well to honor the victims. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Halliburton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willis.
Here.
All present.
All right, entertain a motion on the minutes.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I move approval of the minutes for the morning and noon meetings of August 27th.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Clerk?
Corliss.
Here. Oh, yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, next up, special business. We have a number of appointments to consider. First before us is the appointment of Russell Westerberg to the Airport Commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending June 1st, 2025. I don't see Russ in the audience. Is Russ online? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Russell Westerberg to the Airport Commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending June 1st, 2025.
You've heard the unanimous consent request. That objection is so ordered. Second, we have the reappointment of Carl Peddic to the City of Boise Electrical Code Board for a four-year term ending September 10th, 2028.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Clark Peddic to the City of Boise Electrical Code Board for a four-year term ending September 10th, 2028.
Any objection? It is so ordered. Next up, we have the, is Carl here with us? No? Online? No? Okay. Uh, we have the reappointment of Jessica Aguilar to the Design Review Commission for a four-year term ending October 1st, 2028.
Mr. Mayor, I ask, uh, unanimous consent for a reappointment of Jessica Aguilar to the Design Review Commission for a four-year term ending October 1st, 2028.
Any objection?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just quickly add a comment really quick if I can that, um, it is a huge commitment to join a commission or board here at the city and, um, and some of these are very technical. I really appreciate the time and talent that people are lending to support our city. Um, I've worked one-on-one with Jessica, Jessica Aguilar before. She's really excellent and, um, takes great pride in the work that the commission does, and I'm, I'm proud to have her serving for us and, um, and excited to have these other folks joining the boards too.
Okay. Uh, without objection, it is so ordered. Um, and I was told that Jessica not here. Next item, we have the Fiscal Year 2024 Quarterly Report. Uh, Jesse Stevenson from the Department of Finance is going to make that presentation for us.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm here this evening to present the QR3 report, the third quarterly report of FY24 for the months of April through June. The high-level takeaway is that general fund revenues and expenditures are generally within expected ranges through three quarters of the fiscal year. Turning our attention to the general fund revenues. Adjusting for timing of receipt, overall revenues are projected to meet or exceed budget. It's important to note that revenues are not received uniformly by month. I'll call out that sales and liquor tax distributions are lagged due to timing of receipt. And the second property tax distribution was received in July, which is why you do not see those in the table here, which only reflects actuals realized through the end of June. Overall, we've received 59.9% of revenues year-to-date. This is in line with historical collections, which have ranged from 58% to 71% realized through Q3 in the past three years. I'll also call out that other revenue is less than 50% due to timing of revenues related to ARPA projects. Only 1.5 million of 8.3 million has been realized in ARPA revenues through Q3. So turning attention to general fund expenditures. Overall, expenditures are within the anticipated range after Q3. For personnel, there has been a slight underspend compared to par level, but this is actually higher than Q3 and FY23, in which the personnel spend was 71.7% through Q3 compared to 73.8% through Q3 and FY24. This is largely attributable to a vacancy rate decline. Uh, this was 6.4% on average in Q3, which was down from 10.8% in Q1 and 7.1% in Q2. So this is a huge improvement and kudos to our HR and all our departments for getting positions filled. Vacancy savings were partially offset by one-time compensation and higher-than-budgeted overtime costs. For MNO, this is marginally below the 75% benchmark, but still within the normal range considering the timing and seasonality of expenses. MNO spend through Q3 and FY23 was 60.8%. That's compared to 60.1% or 61.3% in FY24, so we've also seen an improvement in that category. And I'll also mention that this category includes contingencies which may not be expended. So turning our attention to Boise's overall economic environment. Our city's unemployment rate compares favorably to the United States as a whole, the state of Idaho, and the MSA. And the unemployment rate has fluctuated between 2.7 and 3.2% in Q3. So in summary, for the economic conditions affecting Boise, we've experienced low unemployment, relatively high interest rates, and it appears that inflation is stabilizing. For general fund expenditures, those are projected to end the year below budgeted levels, but this has been anticipated, and the FY25 adopted budget assumes approximately 6 million in underspend to balance that budget. Vacancy levels have continued to decrease, so it was a 4.4% decrease from Q1, which is great. MNO expenses are projected to end the year below budget. Overall, general fund revenues are projected to meet or exceed budgeted levels. I'll call out that development fees and departmental revenue are two categories which are anticipated to end the year above budget. For development fees, these have been buoyed by some large commercial projects, and the first three quarters of FY24 are trending above FY23 actuals. And for departmental revenue, uh, two main drivers, one, public safety contracts were now being reimbursed for indirect costs, which are increasing those revenues. And we've also seen enormous demand for a lot of, um, for user fees for some departments like parks and recreation programs, just to the huge demand for those services. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halliburton.
Um, no, no questions for me. Um, I remember what these quarterly reports were like when I first started on council, and they were very challenging to get through, and they're not that way anymore. Uh, they're very easy to understand. They're very transparent. They really give us a great picture of where we're at. Um, I'm always interested when we look at the overtime and then sort of the vacancies that sort of lead to some of those overtime hours. And so those snapshots, I think, are really, really valuable. And so I appreciate, um, those being put together. And then, like you said, we got a, um, presentation from our Parks and Rec Department earlier about the success of some of our facilities and programs and the revenue from there that's been able to be put into some of our capital projects and some other things like that. So, uh, thanks for all the work that went into this. Thanks for outlining all these things. Uh, it's a really easy report to read, and, um, I'm glad that we're right where we wanted to be.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Corliss.
I just see you have one question. Thank you very much for the presentation and going over the Q3 report. Uh, as mentioned, our MNO budget is expected to, um, come under by the end of the year. Is, can you, uh, give us a little more detail or high-level detail on why that'll be under?
Sure. So I don't have, um, oh, Mr. Mayor, uh, council member. Um, I don't have all the details. I'm happy to come back with a lot of the drivers for that MNO underage. We typically do see an underspend in MNO. Um, we're still within the anticipated ranges, but we always anticipate a little bit of below execution. I think historically, a lot of that has been due to vacancy rates. So when we have positions that are empty, we're not able to execute on projects and funding. So that might also affect the MNO spend, but I'm happy to come back with some specific drivers, uh, for this year's variance.
Great. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Jesse. We appreciate it. Uh, next up, we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Counselors, are there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to just speak briefly to SUB24-32. Um, this is in regards to a final plat improvement for, uh, the Boulder Heights development, which is up on the Boise Mesa, um, and, sorry, uh, and there's been, this is, the Starview Road has been a long-time challenge for that neighborhood and has also been a long-time condition of, uh, of that property that the road improvements go through before construction. So I just wanted to reassure the public, um, and the developer that that still is in place. That condition is tied to this project, that those road improvements still need to happen prior to, uh, the building begins.
Any further discussion, counsel? Okay, clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Alrighty. Okay, no ordinances before us tonight, so we are moving into public hearings. We have few applications and two different items. We have CPA 24-1 and CAR 24-1, Hawkins Company, 1770 South Maple Grove Road. Uh, additionally, we have an appeal of CUP 24-12, also same applicant, same property. Both of these are under the Modern Zoning Code. Uh, we'd like to have this hearing for all three applications together, uh, recognizing that a few of them come to us on recommendation from Planning and Zoning and another on appeal. Yes, Councilmember Corliss.
Yeah, um, regarding CPA 24001 and CAR 240001, um, I have previously contributed significant input on these projects through neighborhood meetings, um, with the developer staff. Um, and to ensure that impartiality, I am going to go ahead and recuse myself from, um, any further involvement in this matter.
Okay, uh, just for clarification, uh, I assume that includes CUP 24-12? Uh, we're considering them all in the same hearing?
Yeah, that'll be new for the, but yes, that'll include that as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Jesse, you here? Oh, sorry, you were hiding. I was waiting for you to come up, man. Okay, Jesse, you want to present this to us?
Good evening, um, Mayor, excuse me, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you, as you said, is CPA 24-1, CAR 24-1, and the appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of CUP 24-12. And this project is being reviewed under the Modern Zoning Code. The subject property is located at 1770 Maple Grove Road, and the request is for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation from suburban to compact. A rezone of approximately 6.12 acres from A1 Airport Influence Area Overlay to R2 with an airport influence area overlay. And the appeal of the denial of the conditional use permit to exceed the density limit in the B1 Airport Influence Area for multifamily residential development comprised of 174 units. The proposed density is approximately 28 units per acre. The subject property is primarily undeveloped, and the applicant proposes to remove the existing structures, connect, uh, Vincent Street and Mediterranean Court with a new public roadway, construct three multifamily buildings with a clubhouse adjacent to Maple Grove Road. The proposed land use change to the compact would allow for the rezone to R2, which does not have a density limit. While increased density along an arterial roadway, uh, with transit access near Community Activity Center, uh, would typically be supported, the subject property lies within the B1 Airport Influence Area, which limits density to five units per acre unless approved through a conditional use permit. Comments received from the Boise Airport and Idaho National Guard are not supportive of the proposed, proposed increase in density due to the need to preserve the airport influence area for future expansion of airport operations. Therefore, the existing suburban land use designation is appropriate in this location, and the proposed R2 zoning designation is not compatible with the existing B1 Airport Influence Area limits. Aside from concerns with the proposed land use designation and density, there are other concerns with the layout of the proposed project, namely the location and layout of the proposed roadway construction, which does not meet ACHD driveway spacing standards and poses safety concerns with multiple vehicle, bike, and pedestrian conflict points. I would like to note that there is a representative from ACHD online with us tonight if you have any specific questions for them. Other concerns that are outlined on the slide, but include connectivity, the lack of transition to the single-family neighborhood to the south, and the amount of impermeable surfaces on the site. I would like to note going forward that staff will be using the acronyms AIA for the airport influence area and NIM for the noise, noise exposure, noise exposure model, excuse me. Um, on July 8th, this item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission with testimony from the airport opposed to the proposal in order to preserve areas that may be impacted by existing and future airport operations. Airport Director Rebecca Hupp is here tonight to provide additional testimony, but in summary, the existing airport influence area regulations should be followed, not only to protect the economic value of the increase in passenger travel, but also to preserve the airport's ability to accommodate future military, aerial firefighting, and cargo operations. While noise exposure maps are forecast for five-year time span, the AIA has remained consistent by design to provide long-term protections to areas that could be impacted by future airport operations in ways the short-term NIM studies do not reflect. The reason the CUP is required is to increase the density in the B1 Airport Influence Area over the allowed five units per acre. The diagram on the screen demonstrates the flight path from the airport runways. It should be noted that the subject property, along with the majority of the B1 AIA area, lies directly under the flight path or adjacent to the runways, which is why density is limited in these areas and why additional consideration is given to airport impacts on future residential projects. I would also like to note that less than 3% of the total land area of the city falls within the B1 AIA, which amounts to approximately 1,450 acres. The small percentage of land beholden to the density limits of the B1 AIA means that CUP requests to exceed density limits should be relatively rare. At the hearing, the applicant argued that the proposal will not impact FAA grant funding as the subject property is outside of the noise contours identified in the most recent study from 2020 and shown on the map. The applicant also argued that NIM should be considered when making land use decisions, as was the case in the two projects shown on your screen and described in your packet. However, it should be noted that previous CUP decisions and recommendations do not set a precedent. Each application is evaluated individually based on the specifics of each proposal and the surrounding context of a particular development. Public comment was received in opposition before and after the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, and there was also public testimony heard at this hearing. General themes are outlined on the screen as shown with individual comment letters and verbatim minutes included in your packet for review. After a lengthy discussion involving clarifying questions about noise exposures, the goals of the AIA, the goals of the Modern Zoning Code, um, the commission ultimately voted to deny the CUP to exceed the density and recommended denial on the rezone and comprehensive plan amendment. Of note, there were concerns on how to strike a balance between housing needs within the community and protecting airport operations, with the commission deferring to airport experts to provide guidance for this application as well as previous applications. Additionally, the commission expressed concerns with the design of the proposal, specifically the lack of transitions in the roadway alignment. On July 15th, the applicant appealed the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of the CUP. The grounds of appeal are summarized on your screen, but generally, the applicant contends that the decision is inconsistent because of reliance on the NIMs instead of the AIA and previous decisions. The applicant also contends that airport funding impacts, and the NIM should be utilized to make land use decisions instead of the AIA. The AIA was created to provide guidance for development decisions that may impact the airport in order to protect its long-term viability. The airport also uses other tools such as NIM that change more frequently in order to provide context and additional information. Though the applicant cites two specific instances where the NIM was utilized, each decision is unique, and previous actions, again, do not set a precedent that obligates decisions makers in the future. The FAA does not require cities to use the NIMs to inform their land use decisions, and because these studies only project a five-year planning horizon, the city has specifically chosen not to rely on them only to guide land use decisions. Once a development is built, any changes, um, in airport operations may have unintended impacts on that development, even if the NIM and the noise contour is considered the development compatible at the time of approval. As NIM change frequently, what is considered compliant today may not be considered compliant in the future and could potentially impact, uh, future airport grant funding, which is why the AIA is utilized. During the hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission asked a variety of clarifying questions and had lengthy deliberation before voting to deny the CUP. Based on the testimony presented at the hearing, clarifying questions asked by the commissioners and the discussion of the proposal, Planning and Zoning Commission's decision was not arbitrary. Additionally, the commission has consistently recognized the airport as experts in their operations and considering guidance from the airport when making land use decisions. Therefore, the applicant's assertion that the decision was arbitrary and not supported by substantial evidence is unfounded, and the ground does not demonstrate an error in the commission's decision. With that, I will hand it over to Airport Director Rebecca Hupp for additional information.
Good evening, um, members of the council. Thank you, Jesse, for that intro. Uh, Rebecca Hupp, I'm the airport director, and I'm, I'm here to share some information with you specific to this zoning request and how it has the potential to impact airport operations. And this slide here will not be a surprise to any members of the council. Uh, we are expecting another robust year for passenger travel. In fact, we expect that we will probably see upwards of 5 million passengers through the airport this year, which is not only passengers, but we also have to think about it in the fact that we're going to, we're experiencing larger aircraft, and most importantly, more frequent airline operations and aircraft operations, not just commercial operations, but also as more people move here and operate, um, private aircraft, we're seeing an increase overall. In the airport, when we talk about, uh, the airport, we're really talking about a regional asset and a statewide asset, not just commercial traffic, but we are, and Boise Airport is the only commercial airport in the region. And there's many places to do housing, but there's not many places to have an airport. And so it's crucial that we protect this important asset, not only for the commercial travel, but also for all of the other, um, amenities and services that it provides, including, uh, cargo, general aviation, and most importantly, this time of year, the National Inn or Agency of Fire Center. And the Boise Airport is an economic driver, uh, beyond that, bringing business to and from Boise, facilitating trade, facilitating business. So again, important that we protect that, that asset. As the population continues to grow, and again, this is not a surprise, I'm sure, to any of you, but as the population continues to grow, we will continue to see increases in aircraft operations, um, as well as the size of aircraft that are serving our community and frequency, um, extending earlier into the morning and also later into the evening. Um, so we can expect to see significant growth in the airport as well as our community. Do not worry, I am not going to read you this entire slide. I suspect you've all, um, seen this before. It was in the packet. The airport influence area was designed by intention to be conservative, recognizing that land use planning decisions have very long-term consequences and impacts. And while the noise exposure models are one tool that we can consider, it is not the only tool that we should consider. And the reason for that is that the noise exposure models, by guidance, can only consider a five-year planning horizon. If we put a development that's not compatible with the airport, um, in a zone that's zoned for a different use or a lower density, that impact is going to extend far beyond today. So that is the reason that we use the airport influence area as opposed to the noise exposure model. I would also note that the airport influence area, um, was adopted by both the City of Boise and Ada County through a process using a public, um, input. And as I've just mentioned, it's not decreased in size because the need to preserve the future of the airport has not diminished. Uh, I would also note that noise exposure, the noise exposure model, the decibel is one piece of the equation, but there are several other pieces to the equation. So not only how loud the aircraft is, but how frequently something happens. So think about a very brief noise, um, that you may hear outside your home versus think about your, your neighbor maybe mowing their lawn at 6:00 AM on Saturday. So someone mowing their lawn, normal conditions, maybe that's not going to bother you, different time of day, that will bother you. That also is factored into that noise exposure model. So as we see an increase in activity at night or early in the morning, that also gets weighted into the noise exposure model differently.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halliburton.
Um, Rebecca, sorry to interrupt, but just since you were on this slide, I had a couple of questions. As far as the AIA, I think the last time, or the last time we did that was 40 years ago, is that correct?
It was in the late 90s.
Late 90s.
Yes.
Um, and so I'm just trying to get some perspective of, is that normal? Like, if we were to look at some other cities, how often are people updating their, um, air impact, impact or airport impact area?
I, I don't know that there is a normal. I think in the airport industry, we all like to joke that if you've seen one airport, you've seen one airport. But I think I think we have intentionally not changed the airport influence area, recognizing that the noise exposure model can vary from year to year. And again, back to the concept of, once we build development in an area, we cannot undo that. So if we do something today thinking that our noise exposure models have shrunk over time, and then they increase because of increased activity, we can't undo that. And so we're looking at what's likely or possible, um, and trying to balance that, quite frankly, with the development rights. So I think we're looking at both of those. So to answer your question, I think it could be appropriate to look at the airport influence area and say, is this still what we want to do? And that, it would be And that it would be an appropriate policy decision for council to weigh in on. But changing and deviating from the policy that is set, I don't think, in my opinion, would not be an appropriate course of action.
Mr. Mayor, if I could follow up there. So what I'm hearing right now is we don't have any current plans in place of when we would need to change or update our airport influence area. In other words, we're not seeing a need to do it at this point, and so that we don't have that in the plans in the horizon? Or do we plan on looking at this and reevaluating this area at some point in the future?
We've had significant conversations with the Planning and Zoning Team, or the PDS, Planning and Development Services Team, about the zoning. They, as you know, they've been very focused on the modern zoning code for the last couple of years, and we've identified the airport zoning as something that we would like to look at holistically, not only because of the airport influence area, but because zoning around the airport is a very different thing than what you would see for zoning in other areas. So for example, the university has its own university zone. We think it might be appropriate to have an airport zone. So we have had those conversations, but it's not something that we have done yet, but it is on our planning horizon.
Great, thank you. And thank you for letting me interrupt you.
Oh, I'm happy to answer questions as we go through.
Yeah, Rebecca, I think we're going to have a few questions about the airport impact area. My question is, how does a sound impact plan affect the impact area? Is that something that the airport does? Is that something that would inform changes to the area of impact? Could you speak to a sound impact plan?
I'm not familiar with the phrase "sound impact plan", and I think we're probably, you're maybe referring to something else that I know is something else. So we have what's a compatible land use study, which is the Federal Aviation Regulation Part 150. Is that what you're talking about?
It had come up in the, it had just come up in the minutes, the readout from the P and Z, so maybe folks were off there. But does Jessie have something for us?
Mr. Mayor, council members, you may be referring to something that came up in Planning and Zoning. There were other developments that had gone before Planning and Zoning Commission that were in airport influence areas, and they did have a sound, I'm not sure if it was a study, but essentially, they were trying to mitigate some of those impacts of sound on development. So I think in specific instances that involved a variety of different mitigation efforts for the development itself and also acknowledgements by anyone who would be living in those areas.
Okay, so this is something, a sound impact plan would be something provided by the developer to show the mitigation efforts related to sound. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and council members, that is how that's been referred to in the past.
Okay, so I guess my follow-up to that would be the airport influence area, what data would need to be collected for us to reevaluate that? It sounds like the last time it was amended was late 90s, but it may have been created much earlier than that.
Correct. I think the data that we have would be, we would base it on the data that we have today. We would look and see, does it make sense to do an updated noise exposure model to inform future decisions? And then...
So let me stop you right there. The, are you saying that the noise exposure model would inform the airport impact area?
It would be a piece that would inform the noise, the airport impact area. It would not be the only thing that would inform that. So for example, when we look at the airport influence area, we look at how, for example, neighborhoods are put together. So if a noise exposure model or a noise exposure line goes through a neighborhood, we do the zoning or we make the decision based on other factors such as neighborhoods, streets. You know, you could have two houses side by side that maybe have a different noise exposure model according to the scientific modeling, but in essence, they're going to hear the same, it's going to sound the same, the decibel difference. It's sort of like the difference between getting an 89 and a 90 in school. It's one point, but it has substantial differences. So the noise exposure model might be one piece of what we would consider, but we would also consider other land use around it. So I think that's something that, when we've deviated from the policy before, that has been considered, is what else is in the area? So that might be another factor that we would consider. So other land use, road structure, neighborhoods, some of those things. So it would be a mix of things that we would consider, and ultimately, adoption of a new airport influence area would be a policy decision by council to consider.
Okay.
With recommendations, obviously, from staff.
I think we have a few more questions on this. Jessie, would you mind pulling something up for me while we entertain those questions? Could you pull up the zoning conversion map and focus in on the area that we're talking about? Councilmember Sted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi Rebecca. Do you, I wonder if they're like federal standards or guidelines to determining the AIA? Like, did that, do we, do we know how that was informed the first time? And I guess are there federal standards? Are there are there federal implications to adjusting or impacting the AIA?
The federal requirement is that the city ensure proper zoning and protection of the airport. How the city does that is FAA really leaves to the city's discretion. And I think using the tools that I just mentioned and weighing the different factors is how we would arrive at a policy. And yes, if we were not to comply with the federal regulations, there could be ramifications in terms of violating our grant assurances. So every time we bring a grant to this council where we accept federal funds, we say that we will do certain things. For example, we'll be open 24 hours a day, or not 24 hours a day, but we'll be open to the public, to any user. We will ensure that the airport is self-sufficient to the extent possible. We will assure appropriate zoning. So there's a number of different factors that we provide a grant assurance for as part of that.
Thank you.
Rebecca, within those assurances, what is the federal government looking for? Are, it seems like the height is not the issue here. It seems like it's density and the number of people. How do we arrive at, say, a number of units per acre relative to another set of units per acre?
That is a policy decision, and it's very subjective. So I think we have a standard that was developed, and I think, again, I think it's really subjective based on the council and it's a policy decision. That's, I guess, what I have to just keep coming back to is, it is a policy decision. The AIA has laid that out based on the information. We did review it back when we did our most recent noise study, which was in 2017, 2018, and at that time decided not to amend the AIA. That doesn't mean that we can't ever amend the airport influence area, but that was a decision. We will be also doing an airport master plan this year in '25, which is starting in, our fiscal year is starting in October. So we'll be doing a master plan, so we'll be looking at a number of those larger 20-year-plus planning horizons items.
That map that showed the green, the lines through that was very helpful. I think that's another data point that would be very useful, and it seems like something you would consider in the airport. Is it impact area or airport?
I tend to use them interchangeably. I'm sure one is right and one is less correct, but...
I'll just say AIA, since we all, since everybody in the room knows what that is now. So my question with this zoning conversion map here, obviously, it's the green parcel, if I'm correct, Jessie, that's zoned A1 there is the one that we're considering today. It seems like in the same flight path, we rezoned some stuff last year, including that property at the bottom right, MX-2, which would include, no, bottom right of the screen. Yeah, which seems like in the similar path, you see the other A1 to the left. My question, Rebecca, is, last year when we did this broader rezone and we converted some of these commercial areas, like you're seeing in the MX-2, to residential uses, what was the airport's posture then towards some of those changes that we made?
Mr. Mayor, council members, let me make sure that I am understanding your question. So you're asking, when we did the full rezone for the modern zoning code, what was our threshold for modifying some of these zones within the airport influence area?
This particular one?
Oh, the subject property?
So the one that you clicked on, the MX-2. So I guess in the influence area in general, did we, did we consider that? And if we did consider that, I guess, I'm confused why we'd be recommending denial of a residential property here, but we approved a rezone broadly within the modern zoning code just less than a year ago there.
Mr. Mayor, council members, so with the adoption of the modern zoning code, any parcel that was A1 was left as is. So the subject property was zoned A1 previously, and it is still zoned A1 now. What the applicant is asking for is to rezone to R2, which would allow for unlimited density under the modern zoning code. To the north and some of these other MX areas were previously commercial areas, like along Overland. And so those maintained their commercial usage. So the MX would be the mixed-use zone, which does allow for some residential, but is also a primarily commercial use in the areas that are developed currently.
Okay, thank you. Council? Councilmember Willis?
Mr. Mayor, Director Hupp, thank you so much. I had a question.
Councilmember Willis, if you could speak into your mic, sorry. I'm just going to put a little sticker on there.
Yes, yes, yes. I had a question about a letter that was written and that is included in our packet, and it's from the Regional Airport Office. And it outlines some of the things we've been talking about, but one of the, one of the sections said, talks about complaints specifically. There's, it says, "There are many examples across the country of airports not adequately protecting against non-compatible land use, resulting in numerous noise and other complaints. These complaints can be expensive and lengthy to resolve, which in turn can affect planned development need." Talk to us about what that means.
Sure. So there are a number of airports, and I don't think we have to look too far to see them. Some of the ones that we think about often, that often come to my mind, for example, is Denver Airport, because they specifically relocated Denver Airport because there was a lot of encroachment, and they moved it miles away from the center of the city. And then the city grew up around the airport, quite frankly, much like our community did back in the day when they moved the Boise Airport to its current location. It was not part of the urban core, but then development grew around the airport. So I think that's one really great example. Certainly Burlington, Vermont is another example where they have military aircraft and civilian aircraft operating together, where noise has been incredibly controversial. Phoenix, San Diego, in fact, most airports do have a noise issue, where I think overall, while we have pockets of complaints and concerns, because of our conservative airport influence area, Boise does not have that issue today. It doesn't mean that if we change the influence area and shrink it, or we make exceptions, or if things change, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't have issues in the future.
Mr. Mayor, Director Hupp, so for clarification's sake, what I'm hearing you say is that people complain about noise that happens. I've been to Denver. It is horrible. It is in, do not like flying in there. But what I hear you saying is that the conflict is more about land use, that the city will have to endure, less about any sort of federal funds that, or any sort of thing that the federal government would put constraints around.
Okay, I think that would be a fair assessment. I would say there is, there is definitely a, like many of these things, there's definitely a gray area. I think we have to show that we've used good rationale, that we've set a policy, that there's, that the policy is defendable, that there's reasons behind it. And that, I think, is what FAA is looking for. I think if we did not do zoning, or if we do zoning and we don't follow our zoning, I think that could be a potential issue.
Okay, one more, Mr. Mayor. So I want clarity, and I know there's a gray area here.
Okay.
But under current grant assurance from the federal government, if we change zoning in the area of impact, do we risk federal funding?
I think it depends on where in the area of impact. So there are places within the area of impact where if you change the zoning, it would be contrary to what we have said we would do in terms of the grant assurances. This parcel, I do think, would be an area that we could consider changing the zoning at a future time and not be in conflict with those grant assurances.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Reynolds?
Director Hupp, thanks for being here. I want to go back to a comment you made about the airport influence area overlay map and how it was designed to be conservative. So to me, that suggests that there's, you know, that's the floor. Our staff, as they report in the, in the comments, we have a CUP process for increasing density. That's part of our, part of what our zoning, what our code allows. So we are, you know, this process right here is the proper process to be going through to live up to what we said we were going to do and who the federal government may look to. So I guess, question for you is, I don't know that I saw this in the prior public hearing, but would you say that for the B1 area, you would always prefer that we leave density at the five units per acre and not entertain CUPs like we allow? Or is there some middle room between the proposal we have tonight and that five units per acre in your preference?
I would say, of course, I would always prefer the most conservative approach, which would be the five units per acre. But I'm also a realist, and I know that's why we have a conditional use permit, is because there are times where it might be appropriate to have a greater density, because you all have to weigh a number of factors, including the need for housing, the need for other amenities within the city. So we recognize that there's a time when it's appropriate, hence why there is a conditional use permit. I would say that when we discuss the conditional use permit, and at least for me, when I first envisioned it, the idea was to make it so that way, if there was something unique about the site, for example, the way the roads come in or go out, that there was some flexibility to get better utilization of an existing site, that makes sense. So I'm thinking, if we are at five, go to seven. Five, maybe go to 10, not from five to 28. That's a huge, it's a very, very different use. And that, to me, when we talked about it, that's not what I had envisioned by the CUP. So I think there is definitely room, and I think there's, it definitely, there's opportunity. That's the point of having a conditional use permit, but it's to change it, to modify it slightly, not to completely change it.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, you know, as the Director of Airport, we're relying on you to be as careful as possible, right? That is your role. And so I, you know, I appreciate that and understanding that nuance that's before us. I also want to kind of go back to, if I may, another question, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the problems that encroachment cause airports, it sounds like the examples you gave were airports having to relocate huge economic cost. Is that the primary issue? Or I know you travel and you are well-connected in our airport community. We're so fortunate to have your expertise. What other actual, specific economic impacts are resulting from more neighbors being close to the airport? Because we, we have neighbors there now, and some of them are here tonight. That increase of scale, what does that actually do? Are they, because now there's more neighbors, they're stronger in petitioning their government or their local leaders to move the airport? Or are they running for Congress and slipping things into bills to relocate the way the air traffic comes in and out of Boise? What are we, what are the actual specific encroachment issues?
I think the moving of an airport or including stuff in congressional bills is probably the most extreme examples. However, more normal examples would be things like the airport would be forced to buy someone's home because of the impact. That could be one thing. We could do sound insulation. We could do sound insulation. That could be another thing that we do. When, when, providing better windows and roofing materials. Those are other, those are other things that airports often do, probably most traditionally for homes that have been around an airport from a historical perspective. And then the airport grew up around the home as opposed to the other way around where homes came in around the airport. So it's a little bit of a different situation, but I would say moving an airport is the most extreme thing and that probably is exceptionally rare. But most often, it would be a financial cost. And also there's the burden on the homeowners and the impact on the homeowners being in an area that's not compatible.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on that point, would you say then that, you know, you're leaving open the possibility of airport operations, frequency causing more issues, or maybe different types of airplanes, those kinds of things? And so those impacts are already going to be felt by folks that have much older homes there now that may be mitigated. Are you less concerned about brand new homes that are conditioned to have things that will mitigate those issues than you would be the old homes that are already there?
I, I can't do anything about the old homes that are already there. It's not that I'm not concerned about them, but I would say they already are existing. One of the things, and again, many of the people who are in our area of impact have, have homes that are following the airport and they have what's called an navigation easement over them. So basically it's a recognition that they are adjacent to the airport, that they're going to hear airplane noise. It's something that we require is standard. I will tell you that for people who hear airplane noise, when they sign that on their, when they buy their home, they, they forget about it the next day. So I think, and from a legal perspective, I'm not concerned about the homes that have a navigation easement that were taking their property, but the, the actual impact to the homeowner and the people who live in there, even if they have a navigation impact, I think they perceive that they're being negatively, they're being negatively impacted by the aircraft noise.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. And I do live under one of those red lines. We, and I know you mentioned this, some people like, like planes. We like them, we liked them more when they had the Boise State logo on them, the, the other regional university logos, I don't love as much, but, but, but yeah. And to that point, I don't know if I signed that, but I do know that's just part of the house that I have. So, thank you.
Well, and I think you bring up another good point, which you can live there and, and you can love the airplane noise. Maybe you're a pilot, maybe you're an aviation enthusiast, but someone else might work nights and it might be really bothersome to them. So it, noise is very subjective and we're trying to take something that is subjective and personal and create a policy around it that is uniform and use criteria that are more objective, recognizing that we're not going to be able to appease everyone.
Rebecca, we'll let you finish your slides now. Maybe you forgot that you brought a presentation, but.
I think the council was ahead of me. I think we already talked about my slides, so I, I just wanted to touch on the grant obligation piece. And then just request that the council uphold the decision from planning and zoning because it does not meet the criteria to overturn the decision. But that, that concludes my slides. I'm happy to answer any additional questions from members of the council.
Mr. Mayor, Rebecca, will you actually go back a slide? So I think when you're answering Councilmember Morales's question, this is maybe how I understood it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that if we signal to the FAA that we're willing to rezone something to unlimited density, that's potentially a red flag and not necessarily something that, a pattern that they would want to see. But with a conditional use permit, if it's a small adjustment, that's probably not as big of a red flag and doesn't necessarily create a pattern that they would be as concerned about. Is that kind of what I heard you say?
I think that's 100% accurate, yes. So we do have a conditional use permit. It does allow for some variation in, in the zoning code. So it's, you would be, by granting a small adjustment using a CUP, that would be in compliance with the code and the policy. I would encourage the council to think about the policy as a whole. And, you know, I think when we've deviated from the policy in the past, it's created issues.
Great, thank you. I have some other council or questions for other staff, but if people have questions for Rebecca, pause for that.
I think we have questions for staff, so.
Great, Jesse, I got a couple of questions for you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Councilmember Halliburton?
Jesse, if we, if we could either pull up either one of your earlier slides or the conversion map that Mr. Mayor requested earlier today and keep going, there was two sort of like side-by-side zoning maps, right? Here we go. So right now we've got A1 because we preserved everything that was already A1. We just didn't change it, we left it the same. That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, council members, that's correct.
And by right, if somebody wanted to build, they could build, is it 5.4 units per acre on those A1s right now?
Mr. Mayor, council members, A1 is limited to one unit per acre of density.
One unit per acre, where's the, and then will you remind me where the 5.4 or the five units per acre that I'm getting at? Is that just for suburban?
Mr. Mayor, council members, the five units per acre is the limit imposed on any development or any piece of land within the B1 airport influence area.
Great. And then there's another, there's another metric that's, I think it's 12.4 units per acre, and what's that associated with?
Mr. Mayor, council members, 12.4 units per acre is the maximum density allowed in the R1C zone. The subject property is designated as suburban on the land use map, which does allow for R1C rezoning without the comprehensive land use change. Is that what you're referring to?
Yep. And then anything above R1C would be considered compact?
Mr. Mayor, council members, yes, any other residential zone would need to be compact.
Great, thank you. And so when we went through and we did some of the, the rezoning, we looked at a lot of this area and it looks like we chose MX type zoning for a lot of different things. And I think that the reasoning is, is that while those could allow some housing, we're basically trying to create an opportunity for different types of commercial and we're not necessarily approving the full amount of housing that could go into those MX spots.
Mr. Mayor, council members, that's a great question. So when we did the master rezone for the entire city with the adoption of the modern zoning code, we did have a conversion formula essentially that converted some of the previous commercial zones to mixed use zones. We did not modify the zoning within the airport influence area, understanding that the overlay would still apply to any of the new zones.
Councilmember Halliburton, can I ask a question on that?
Yeah, go for it.
So, for example, that, and how would a, how would the overlay restrict density in, say, an MX two zone that's adjacent to the property? How, how would the overlay restrict that residential development?
Mr. Mayor, council members, the overlay would still apply. So if a property was zoned MX two and the, an applicant wanted to redevelop that property with housing as part of that mix of uses, it would still be limited to that five units per acre within the B1 airport influence area.
Okay. And then, Mr. Mayor, my final question, I think is just related to, to when we're looking at these different areas and when we look at R1C and sort of what we typically see butted up against it. So if I look on the other side of Overland, I do see one, R13 or R3 right next to some R1C. I'm just trying to figure out if there wasn't for the airport influence area, would we be considering R2 unlimited density in this area? Or would be, would we be looking for a smaller density in R2 or something like that?
Mr. Mayor, council members, that's another great question. Based on the current land use map, which is the map on the right, it would support without any land use map changes, up to 12.4 units per acre with an R1C zone. However, this property is also within an activity center. It's on a transit line. There are some, and other factors that if the airport influencer wasn't a factor, could support a higher density and more of a transition to the commercial to the north.
And would we consider R2 a transition, a transition to the north?
Mr. Mayor, council members, yeah, R2 would be the next highest increase in the residential zoning. So that would allow for smaller lot sizes than the R1C. It would allow for a different type of uses, so multifamily and higher buildings than the R1C. And then it could provide more of a transition to the mixed use to the north.
Great, thank you.
Jesse, when staff is thinking about transition between mixed use area and residential area, what is, what is that? Is that like from a commercial area to residential? Is that mixed uses? Is that, is that scaling? What is, what is an appropriate transition in a planner's mind?
Mr. Mayor, council members, transition standards are something that we look at in a variety of contexts. It could be having a more community-focused mix of uses or neighborhood-focused mix of uses as a transition. It could be having a slight increase or decrease in density. It could be just the building heights and standards, having additional setbacks. We do have neighborhood transition standards that do address some of these things written into the modern zoning code. And all of that is to try to make the transitions from, say, a single-family neighborhood to a commercial neighborhood more smooth and blend better, essentially.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, Jesse. So can you, why would five, I want to understand, I guess, is five units per acre, is that proposed in the AIA because we'd rather five people be impacted than 100 people? Or because it's easier to mitigate sound in five homes than it is in 100 homes? Do you know why? Question mark.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I, you know, was not there when the AIA was created. I have not been involved in some of those conversations. However, having more residents in an area that is impacted does impact more people. And I think there was a need and a want to try to balance impacts versus need for housing. I don't know if Rebecca had any other additional comments on that. She said she agreed.
I also was not here in the late 90s when they decided that question. But to your point, I mean, we don't want people to be negatively impacted, whether it's one person or 100 people. But I think with many of these decisions, policy decisions, as you know, you're balancing competing needs and interests. And at the time, it was decided that five units per acre was the appropriate level of development, recognizing the city's need to develop, but also recognizing the need to protect the airport. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales?
Jesse, I got a question for you, kind of similar to that. So at this time, when we decided it was five units per acre, we also had a more strict zoning code. Obviously, we had the modern zoning code, which recognizes that our city's growing and nods to, you know, the need for density for a lot of reasons. Did we just, did we, during that, and maybe this question isn't for you, maybe you don't know, but during the zoning code rewrite, was there a thought about the airport area of influence?
Councilmember Morales, I think I can hop in there and if council members that were here. When we took up modern zoning code, there was a couple of issues we punted on. We did not take up, for example, where homeless shelter could be in the city. We did not take up some of these questions about the airport and that was something that was discussed openly on the record. So I think, I think we have a pretty good handle on some of these issues related to airport zones. We punted on for another day and that day's here.
I don't really want to talk about returns right now.
Yeah, I got you. Jesse, got some questions for you about the design of the property. Could we talk about, maybe this be an opportunity for ACHD to weigh in on what conflict points they observe? And it looks like, is this staff's proposed reoriented roadway here?
Mr. Mayor, council members, so the yellow alternative roadway identified would be something that would follow the line of what was anticipated here a little more closely than what is proposed with the additional curve.
Understood. Okay. Well, it seems like you've already anticipated that question. I guess further questions about like site design, like how would we, how would staff want this property to look like along Maple Grove Road? Like I know some projects, we've advocated for like entrances to be on that main arterial. Like how would staff like to see some of the design elements of this change, but for other concerns related to the airport?
Mr. Mayor, council members, that is an interesting question and there are a variety of ways that this could be designed. I do just want to point out that we are here to look at the density of the project, not necessarily the design. Better form for that would be if there were things you wanted to see, we could put that into a development agreement. However, I think typically what we do want to see along arterials and in that transition is maybe more commercial or community-serving uses along arterials with a better transition from the single-family homes to the south to maybe a different type of residential. Again, this is about the density today. So if you have concerns about the development or design of the development, that's something that we could potentially work through in a DA process.
Am I wrong to assume that consideration of a conditional use permit could support conditions such as design that could end up going into a development agreement?
Mr. Mayor, council members, that is correct. You can add conditions to a conditional use permit. There were not any conditions originally proposed with the project report because staff was recommending denial.
Understood, understood. In addition to design, what type of landscaping features do you feel like this property may be mixing, if you're, missing, if you're, if you're willing to comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I know that from the design proposed, there are some class three trees that were not included that are requirements of development code. I know that there are some landscape buffers along the proposed roadway that were not separated from the sidewalk or used to separate the sidewalk. I think there was some comment at the planning and zoning hearing about potentially wanting some more active open space for residents, those types of things.
Okay. Councilmember Halliburton?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I might kind of reword some of those questions a little bit. So I think my understanding is, as far as projects that we typically see, there's a few things that seem like they're missing, you know, in, in the actual project itself. And I think that what I've read from the past transcript is because we haven't really gotten to that completed part of this application yet, because we're just trying to figure out whether or not we can get the density. So we sort of have a preliminary process and staff hasn't really gone through and worked with the applicant yet to get all these things perfect. And that's the process that would happen if this was approved. Staff would go back and begin to work on those elements of the project. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, council members, if that was something that the council wanted to see is a different design or different design elements for this property, that's something that can be worked through either in a development agreement or through a condition, through a conditional use permit. However, like you stated, the design of the proposal was not really something that was being super carefully considered because this was a conditional use permit about density specifically.
Perfect. So potentially you'd be sending it back with the DA on the zoning?
Mr. Mayor, council members, if, if that is something that the council wanted to see, we can work with the applicant to craft a DA and work on a design based on your recommendations and, you know, things that you wanted to see on this parcel.
Sounds good. Yeah, I don't know if that'll be the direction that it goes, but yeah, trying to make sure that we sort of understand what some of the options are. And then also sort of understanding that we're just not really used to seeing, I think, a picture of a development like this that seems kind of in- I think, a picture of a development like this that seems kind of incomplete without having already identified some of what the staff's typical wants and needs that meet our zoning codes. And so I think that that makes sense, why isn't there yet, but also how we could move forward if we wanted to get it there. So that's helpful.
Jesse, piggybacking off that question from Councilmember Halliburton, if this did go to staff to work on a DA, under modern zoning code, we wouldn't anticipate that coming back before council, correct?
Mr. Mayor, council members, if there was supposed to be, or there was a council desire to wish to see a, wow, sorry. If it was council's desire to see a DA on this property, staff can work with the applicant and then a DA does have to come back before council for approval.
For a public hearing or just, is it?
That's correct, a public hearing.
Okay. All right, council, anything further for staff? All right, applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mr. Mayor, in light of the many questions that the council had on this project, I'd like to respectfully request 15 minutes. I'd like to request 20 minutes, and I would try to keep it shorter than that. But I want to ensure I can answer all of your questions and more.
If you can do in 15, that'd be great. We can, I would plan on giving you 20 today. So is that what you want?
That would be absolutely fantastic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's clerk have 20 minutes for the applicant. You want to take a break right now?
I'm just waiting for my presentation to be pulled up. Good evening, council members. My name is Ethan Mansfield, representing Hawkins Companies, 855 West Broad Street, 83702 Boise, Idaho. I'm here tonight to talk about this project. Here are, President Nash, you asked about the frontage along Maple Grove. That is what it's kind of conceived of today. It's currently, or the site is located on the southwestern corner of Maple Grove and Overland, just outside of the commercially zone or mixed use zone portion of the Maple Grove and Overland Activity Center. It's existing as A1, proposed as R2. Here's a little bit about the project. We're proposing R2 zoning, compact land use and a CUP to exceed five acres, five units per acre. We're proposing 170 multifamily homes. We're proposing two four-story buildings, one three-story building on the south side of the project. Again, the R1C, which is to the south, that height limit is 40 feet. This building is slightly over that with the pitched roof. So this is the same height as something that would be allowed in the R1C zone. We were careful to think about that transition.
How many, how many feet?
Forty feet.
You said it's over 40?
Mr. President, slightly over the, no more than 45, which is the height limit of the R2 zone. We're proposing 1.56 parking spaces per unit. It has a public road connection to Mohican, from Mohican to Vincent Street. And this also will allow access to the Vanelle Street bikeway. And then we have worked hard to provide direct bike and pedestrian connectivity throughout the site. We do meet all of the open space standards. We actually exceed them. However, I should mention we are open to site plan feedback. We have not applied for a design review or subdivision, both of which will be required. And at that time, we will address all of the site plan issues that you have brought up today. So we look forward to having that conversation as well. But as Jesse mentioned, this is about density tonight. So let's just talk a little bit about the surrounding future land use. It does exist with, the site does exist within the Maple Grove and Overland Activity Center. These activity centers, community activity center, and they typically request 12 to 20 dwelling units per acre. Currently, the gross density of this activity center is 1.5 units per acre. The addition of 174 units will be 1.8 dwelling units per acre, which is still well shy of the 12 units per acre minimum that's envisioned in these activity centers. The southwest planning area calls out, existing activity centers in the southwest today are low in density and largely oriented.
Could I interrupt you on this? So 20, explain to me your calculation. How did you get for, isn't this a six acre property?
Mayor Nash, it is a six acre property. This 12 to 20 goal is attempting to measure all the land within one half mile of the center of the Maple Grove and Overland Road intersection.
When you were talking about this property specifically, how many units per acre are you proposing?
We're proposing 28.
Okay, great.
Yeah, just under. Thank you, Council President. Mr. Mayor, excuse me. So here is a list of all of the blueprint Boise objectives that this project meets. I should note that if it remains, this land use remains suburban, it's very, very difficult to achieve some of these goals with the current land use mix within this activity center. Currently, 54% of the land within the Maple Grove and Overland Activity Center is suburban land use. MX3 and the activity center goals all call out for pedestrian oriented design. It's very difficult to provide pedestrian oriented design when there are no pedestrians to orient around. So this project will hopefully address that in part. You can see that this property would actually have been zoned R2 with the modern zoning code rewrite, but for two things. Number one, no, as you know, no property that was zoned A1 was rezoned with the modern zoning code rewrite. The other one is that the Maple Grove bus route 28 runs less frequently than every 15 minutes. If that was a 15 minute bus line, this thing would be zoned R2 on its face. And as we talked about earlier, staff appears comfortable with the density generally, but for the airport influence area. So let's talk a little bit about the airport influence area. I've been very excited to talk to you about this. We've spent about two years on this project. And I'd like to first establish two facts, and these are facts that we've confirmed with the FAA. This development is compatible based on the FAA's definition of compatibility. And it does not impact, negatively impact airport operations or grant assurances. And that's because the language around compatibility is baked into the discussion about the grant assurances. Does that, does that make sense? So?
I think you're gonna have to be more specific. I mean, we're, we're pretty deferential to our airport director on FAA guidelines, grant assurances. We got a lot of money riding on it. So when you're talking about their definition of compatibility, you're gonna have to be more specific.
Absolutely. That brings me to my next slide, which is this slide. So this is from the 14 CFR Part 150 regulations. This is all about airport land use. So compatibility is determined by where a property is located relative to the noise exposure maps. So you can see that when you have a property that's located outside of the 65 DNL contour line, residential land use is compatible without restriction. It doesn't limit density. It doesn't provide a density, a density scale of any type. So that's something to keep in mind. Let's just talk really quickly about the noise exposure maps. This is the current 2020 noise exposure map. And these maps are developed as part of a federal program to create and update noise compatibility studies. So the maps represent a worst case, and I quoting this from the CFR Part 150 study. These maps represent a quote unquote worst case scenario for which the city of Boise and Ada County can use to make informed land use and zoning decisions. So these maps are modern. They're updated every five years. They're prepared for the Boise Airport by sound professionals. They're designed using well documented federally mandated guidelines, and they're approved and used by the FAA to determine things like compatibility, Mr. Mayor. They use the most current sound data. They update growth assumptions. And they are, again, used for the intended purpose of land use planning. And this particular 2020 noise contour map assumes that there are 18 F-35s at Gallenfield. And if you remember, the debate around the F-35 was supercharged with a lot of information about how noisy they would be. This is the map that, that shows that noise.
Ethan, do you have any data that would support, like, if you want to go back to that map, what the worst case scenario is for the subject property? Like, are we talking 59 decibels or is it, I show, it looks like less than 60, but do we have any idea what it is for this specific property?
Mr. Mayor, that is a fantastic question. To answer technical questions, we've brought along Earl Mullins, who's a professional sound engineer. He actually did our sound study at Canyon Ridge.
We can?
I'm wondering if we can pause the time while the questions are being asked?
Yeah, that's fine. The, you can continue with your presentation. If we get to it at the end, be happy to hear.
So again, if we look at where the 65 decibel is located on this map, it is in the yellow. So green is the kind of conservative boundary of 60 decibels. Again, anything outside of the yellow is compatible without restriction per FAA guidelines. So let's compare that with the airport influence area, which was adopted by council in 1998. One thing I would like to point out is that the information in your packet is actually incorrect. The airport influence area B1 is no longer impacted by decibel levels between 65 and 70 decibels, DNL. And you can see that's proven here by the 2020 noise exposure maps. So I think this does reflect that in the past, airport noise exposure maps were much larger than they are today, in part due to changing technology. And Mr. Mullins can speak to that. They've been consistently growing smaller over time, almost without exception. These AIA boundaries have not been changed since before 1996, per the Part 150 study, when you actually read into it. It is likely that the AIA represents the noise exposure maps in place in the mid 90s. And this actually contradicts Blueprint Boise's goal ES 8.2, which requires or asks the city to modify and update noise ordinances, regulations and guidelines as required by state and federal requirements and the adopted airport master plan based on noise monitoring. So that's kind of why, why we feel the noise exposure map might be actually, is probably the right map to use, because that is truly the noise monitoring. Another thing that I'd like to point out is we're not using floodplain data from 1996. We have a floodplain overlay in our zoning code. It changes when there are new floodplain maps released by Federal Agency FEMA. And if necessary, the city council could put a buffer around those maps. They choose not to. But, you know, we don't use science from the 90s in other areas of our policymaking to decide what is the correct way to proceed forward in the, in 2024. And I think I'll skip over, this airport overlay was implemented into the modern zoning code, and we all know that. So here's a comparison. We ran some numbers. We found that about 10,000 acres of Boise's land area is outside of the 65 decibel contour. So that's compatible without constriction, but within where residential uses are restricted by the AIA. So that's 10,000 acres where you've got this like, like the FAA says, go for it. We're not, not going to impact grant funding. But the city of Boise restricts it. So I've just got a couple story, quick stories here. So Micron's corporate housing provider is working with Micron right now to convince Micron to allow their workers to be placed in Meridian because they cannot find housing near Micron and Boise. We got an email from Paragon CEO today or yesterday talking about that. So the challenges of finding housing for the new industrial growth in the southeast are very, very real.
Which I'd point out, we can think the airport for.
Thank you, Council President and Mr. Mayor. Hawkins has also been approached at Canyon Ridge by multiple corporate housing providers, asking to lease all of the units at Canyon Ridge. We're not going to do that. Our maximum is 10% to corporate housing providers. That's an internal decision that we've made. Again, here's a map showing the pink is where residential is restricted, restricted or limited. And yellow is where the FAA NEMs fall. So let's talk a little about how far it would have to go to hit our site. How much would this have to expand, the 65 decibel contour line have to expand? So nearly 20,000 existing homes would be impacted by a 65 decibel move before our project. That includes, or sorry, that does not include projects that have been approved but not yet built, like Semenage Farms, which looks to be a very cool project. And I for one appreciate that you approved it because it's a great place for housing. It does also, another interesting thing is that this is the F-35 decibel contour. And these are the houses, there are 272 homes that were deemed unsuitable for living. That is 1% of the number of homes that would be affected if you actually blew out the area. So my question is, what scenario would be allowed by the city of Boise that would, would create noncompatibility with 20,000 homes before this development? And then finally, I'd like to briefly touch on our Canyon Ridge development. You can see the 287 units, and many of you probably remember, the 287 units were approved inside airport influence area B, where residential development is not allowed per the airport influence area, but well outside the 65 and 60 DNL contour. It's situated, as you can see, very similarly, but on the opposite side as our development. I also remember from the earlier slide that was shown, there is actually more impact on the number of flights coming in on that side than on the CUP 2412 side, if we wanted to go back to Rebecca's slide. So that's just something I found interesting. In addition, something that was not included in the airport comments for our development was this. Two independent noise studies conclude, and then they list all this stuff, what that comes down to is airport funding is not impacted and the airport does not oppose residential development. So our memo from the airport did not include anything about sound studies. And so we're asking the question, why? What, what's different about this development to not warrant citing scientific evidence to allow or disallow this project? And finally, I'd just like to spend the rest of my time or the next four minutes just taking a look at what happened in April 2021, when this Canyon Ridge development was being approved. And I'll put it on the record right here.
And yes, we just had this discussion about the school district and abiding by the expert opinion of the various city offices. In this case, I think we have the clear opinion of the airport that this doesn't fit within their policies. And I'm just curious why, why should this commissioner disagree with the airport and agree with the planning staff and the applicant?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, and maybe Matt could further elaborate, but they do go on within their, their memo to do state that this does not violate the FAA Grant Assurance 21. And will, and that residential is compatible here and that they would be amenable to it, provided that it's consistent with the surrounding area. And there is an apartment complex directly next door to this. This isn't in a regional activity center, which is ideal for supporting this type of density. It is outside of the, the 65 decibel contour, which is really where that B was trying, that B zone was trying to limit density. But the new sound studies that we have is indicate those, those old surveys are not exactly accurate. So we're trying to adjust the, we're trying to adjust for the new data that hasn't, that has not been fully adopted yet into, into the zoning ordinance. And maybe Matt could better elaborate on, but that's my understanding, that they basically did state within letter that residential uses would be acceptable here, provided that certain conditions were met and that it was consistent with the surrounding area.
I also saw Ms. Hupp's hand briefly raised. I don't know if Matt or Rebecca want to jump in on this one.
Sure, I'll jump in. Thank you. And thank you for the question, Commissioner Gillespie. But I think that it was explained very well that initially the zoning that was developed did not comply because, under previous noise studies, under the current and most recent noise study that we have, it is outside of what we would consider the noise impact area. And so we did not specifically object to, to this request.
Thank you. Thank you. And just for the written record, that's Rebecca Hupp with the Boise Airport. Thank you, Commissioner Gillespie.
Good evening, Ms. Hupp. So Ms. Hupp, I'm just a little bit confused. Normally when we, when we get a note from an agency and they say it's not consistent with the adopted policy of the city, that usually means, at least to me, that the agency's recommend, is recommending denial of the application because it's not consistent. But in this case, what Matt called the adopted interim airport influence area of policy, she says was adopted in 2020. So could you clarify what the airport's view is of what your recommendation or your finding is for this?
I would be happy to. So I think the point that we were making in that memo is that the policy, existing policy did not, does not align with the existing conditions today. So the policy is not, the existing zoning has not been updated. The policy only addressed area B1. So we wanted to go ahead and address B that had not been an issue that had been raised before. And I think it's something that we will look forward to as we rewrite the zoning code, but it's not something that's been done yet. And so when we apply the same standard of outside of the noise contours, this project does meet those parameters. The density is slightly more than the surrounding community that said it is outside of the noise contour and it would not be a violation of the FAA grant. So that's what the commission needs to decide is the appropriate level of density. And we do not object to that.
And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I'd like to just make one more kind of concluding slide in my last minute. I think that, you know, when we heard that as a development team, we thought this project would be no issue. So we approached the airport several years ago and started that conversation and they said it would be an issue. And we really never understood exactly why. So we're asking now to understand what's changed with, with the airport situation. You know, I don't know of any additional master plans that have been updated. I'm not sure, you know, how the airport's position has changed, other than, you know, they left out the independent noise studies in our, in our, in this letter. So our understanding is CUP 2412 is compatible based on the FAA's compatible definition of compatibility. CUP, this project will not impact airport funding now or in the future. A conditional use project could be granted to allow this project. We are not asking the airport to limit their operations in any way. We can soundproof, we can insulate, just like we did at Canyon Ridge. We can have our tenants sign waivers if that's requested. So we're asking you to please approve this project and uphold CUP 24, the appeal of CUP 2412. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ethan. Council questions for Ethan?
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have a question that's not sound related, believe it or not. I know that there was some public testimony with concerns around the water assurance of this property. And I know that the city has a 50-year water assurance policy with new development. Can you talk me through what that process looks like, what you are doing to assure the water supply?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, Council Protown Stead, that is a great question. We actually approached Veolia pretty early on to ensure that we could meet that requirement. How to deliver exactly what the city needs to prove that assurance is actually still unclear. You know, we met with Kevin Holmes recently to, or in the pre-app for this presentation, for this application, actually. And, you know, we're still working through what that actually looks like. How do you prove that? But we've spoken with Veolia. Their position is, yeah, you know, we're, we will not have any issues delivering water 50 years into the future for this site.
Thank you. And can I pivot that question, I guess, over to staff? Is, can you speak to that at all? Is there, what is that process and how are we like verifying that assurance? Is it just the nod from Veolia? Is there more required? Or is it still in the works?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, there's something that was adopted with the modern zoning code. We haven't had a lot of those applications come through yet. I do know that it is in something that is a partnership between our Public Works Department and Veolia, and that is to assure water on the subject property. I'm not sure how much in the radius or what else that looks like. However, that would be something that would be addressed during a design review application if this were to be approved.
Ethan, is there any intention to drill wells here to provide for the water supply?
Mr. Mayor, absolutely not. It would be, it would be all city water or we're looking at potentially using water rights from irrigation canal, existing water rights to provide irrigation water, which is commonly done in Boise and Meridian.
Okay. Council, Councilmember Morales?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Ethan, wanted to ask you, similar to water. So we had a lot of public, public comment about residents nearby that are on wells. And I don't know if that's everyone on Mediterranean or the surrounding properties. But when you're doing development, you know, on the edge, are there opportunities to work with neighboring property owners to connect into systems that you're building onto the property? What is, what does that look like? Or maybe, maybe that's a city thing too, where there may be an opportunity for that.
Mr. Mayor, a mayor, Councilmember Morales, that is a fantastic question. We are certainly open to that discussion. There is water and sewer immediately adjacent to the property. And I believe that the adjacent residents are connected to both water and sewer. I need to confirm that, but it is a good question.
Councilmember Halbert?
Mr. Mayor? Ethan, good to see you. Thanks for presentation. So a lot's changed since the video that you showed us from 2021, including the zoning code, who was on planning and zoning, who was on council. Is there anything that has changed in your application since when the video that you were showing us and what you're proposing today? Or was it the same density, same proposal, same development map?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, so that proposed, that hearing was for Canyon Ridge, which remains, we're actually just delivering the first units last weekend, welcoming new residents to that area town. So that application remains substantially similar. I mean, everything out there looks like what you approved and that was appealed. And you, I think overturned the appeal and upheld the construction of those units. This application was not yet conceived of, but it has a very similar density to the Canyon Ridge project.
Do you remember what the density was for the Canyon Ridge project?
I believe it was about 26 units per acre.
So you're saying that project was denser?
So the Maple Grove and Overland project is just under, it's about 25, 27 and a half units per acre. Canyon Ridge is right around 26.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any more questions for the applicant? Councilmember Willetts?
Yes, I had a question. Thank you so much for your thorough presentation. Could you go back to the comparison between the modern zoning code and the previous zoning code? The slides?
Jesse, may I share this? Oh, thank you.
I want to ensure that I understand your point. Keep going. Keep going. As I recall, you were showing the different zones that were adjacent to the property. There you go. Okay. So I want to make sure that I understand your point here. We've, we've heard that anything that was A1 wasn't changed. Is your point here that had this not been bare ground? Or if it had been zoned something else, that it would then be R2 because of where it is? Walk me through that a little bit more.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I absolutely should have explained that a little better. Thanks for pointing that out. So essentially, because this is an eighth of a mile south of the intersection of this activity center, all of those properties were identified as things to zone as R2 if it's on a bus route that runs at 15 minutes during the peak hours.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat for clarity's sake. So if there was more consistent bus service, you believe that this would have been an R2?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Willetts, I feel like when we debated the monitoring code, I feel like a bus route along here actually came up. If you, do you remember a conversation of us looking at bus maps? Council, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, I think we're going to take a five-minute break and then get to public testimony. Ethan, before we get into public testimony, you mind if you come back up here for another question from me?
Mr. Mayor, absolutely.
Talked a lot about density and sound. Given that this is a conditional use permit and we could send this back to work on a DA, I think there's some things around the design that I have concerns about. And you did state an openness to that. Could you just maybe speak to that in more detail on the record?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, we developed what we wanted to build on here, what we know will rent. We think this is the best use for this piece of land. That said, we are absolutely, and so I should say, after that point, there wasn't a lot of discussion about meeting the city in the middle or working to try and find an optimal kind of solution where both the developer and the city can, can work with it. So, and that's because of the airport influence area. So we spent most of our time and energy, all of our time and energy after that point, kind of working on this AIA thing. And we didn't want to start, you know, designing a bunch of stuff that the city hadn't asked for or, or thought about.
I think I understand that. Understanding there may be concerns about orientation of the road, landscaping, limited open space, sidewalks, trees, the number of impermeable surfaces, like given those concerns, is, is there an openness to?
Mr. Mayor, absolutely.
Okay. And my other question, have you considered any other uses on this property other than residential? Like mixed use or so forth? There's, it's been exclusively focused on residential.
Mr. Mayor, because we're going from a suburban land use to something else, we felt compact was kind of the least impactful jump. Anything larger than that? I mean, imagine going into a mixed use from a suburban. It's a big jump. We're trying to minimally impact the surrounding neighborhood. And we feel that the three-story building kind of achieves that kind of step up. Commercial would be absolutely more impactful as far as noise, trip generation, traffic. And we have a large commercial center just to our north. So there's, you know, what we were hoping is to provide some demand, pedestrian demand for all those services.
Great. All right, thank you. Okay, do we have any representatives from the Neighborhood Association that would like to testify? South Cole? Online? Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. My name is Estee La Friends and I am the president of South Cole Neighborhood Association. When I first saw this project, I thought it was a great place for housing because it was within walking distance of commercial restaurants and shopping centers. However, after hearing the airport's presentation, we realized that high-density residential is not an option here. The SCNA board is requesting the denial of this project, all three applications, and urges the city council to comply with the airport's regulatory requirements for noise impacts. While we understand the need to address housing demands in our growing city, I urge you to reconsider this particular development plan in light of the potential negative impacts on public safety, airport operations, and the city's access to essential federal funding. As the airport has presented, this development is in the airport noise influence area B1. Placing high-density housing in this area without proper planning could lead to increased noise complaints, operational restrictions of the airport, and potential impacts on FAA grant funding. It's important for city planners and airport authorities to collaborate to ensure that land use in B1 zones remains compatible with airport operations. The placement of high-density housing within airport noise influence areas can have significant impacts for airports seeking Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, grant funding, particularly through programs such as the Airport Improvement Program, AIP. The FAA has strict guidelines on land use and noise compatibility, and placing residential developments in areas exposed to high levels of aircraft noise can jeopardize or complicate an airport's ability to secure funding. Grant eligibility under the AIP is tied to an airport's compliance with FAA regulations, including proper land use management. Incompatible land use, such as high-density housing in areas of high aircraft noise, can disqualify an airport from receiving certain FAA funds. If local governments do not cooperate in limiting high-density housing near the airport, the FAA may withhold grant funds. As noise complaints from residents within the noise influence areas increase over time with our growing population, political and social pressure may build to restrict airport operations, such as introducing flight curfews or reducing the number of flights. These restrictions can impact the airport's viability and ability to expand. In extreme cases, long-term noise issues and community pressure may force airport relocation discussions, a costly and disruptive process for both the airport and the city. Relocating airports due to noise and residential encroachment has been a common theme in recent US aviation history, with notable examples such as airports in Denver, Austin, and Kansas City. The city of Boise should respect the airport's noise influence areas so that the airport can continue to use federal funds for expansion. This decision should be obvious, as federal funding frees up local tax dollars for other uses. In summary, the land use compatibility must remain compatible with the airport's A1O district. The density threshold of five units per acre was established to meet the goals outlined in the AIA, and it's not arbitrary. SCNA requests the denial of this project and urges the city council to comply with the airport's regulatory requirements for noise impacts. Thank you.
Estee has some questions for you. Beyond the testimony given and that we've heard from both the applicant and the city on the impacts related to the airport, does the Neighborhood Association have any feedback on the specific design, density, and other considerations for this particular property? The property is owned by a developer. The chances that it gets developed are potentially, are possible, even if it's not with the existing proposal. And we'd just really like the Neighborhood Association's input on what this property could or should be.
Yeah, when we discussed the project, and you know, initially, we thought it was a good place for housing because it's, it's located in a, in a great area of the city that has, you know, access to shopping centers and, and is a walkable distance to restaurants and things like that. However, once we recognized that it seemed to be in violation of the, the airport's noise influence areas, I, I think this has come up in, in a few of my projects recently, in the last few years. And I've looked at this a lot. So we didn't discuss, you know, certainly the, the density, although I think we need to comply with what the, the airport's AIA says.
Okay, thank you. Any other Neighborhood Association testimony we expect? Okay. So on the appeal, I'm going to look to legal for a head nod. On the appeal, we have parties of record listed here. We can testify on the appeal. However, we're considering multiple applications, so we're allowing testimony to everyone. Okay. All right, I have no one signed up to testify. I assume there are people here in the audience and online who would like to testify. Can I get a show of hands of who plans to testify? Okay, great. So what we'll have you do is each of you will have three minutes to testify. Okay, great. So what we'll have you do is each of you will have three minutes to testify. If you want to come up here and state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes. I think the direction that I would give you is similar to the commentary that I just gave the Neighborhood Association, which is I heard a lot of testimony and up down related to the airport, you're welcome to to offer that as well. But if there's feedback that you have, if you are a neighbor of this property about, hey, I think this is too tall, or hey, I really like to walk here, and I would like that to be preserved, or I'm concerned about the traffic, we would invite that kind of testimony as well. So if the first person wants to come up, state your name, address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is, my name is Robert McGarvey. I live at eighty eight oh one West Mediterranean Court. And my testimony, I think you have my letter, so I'll try to make it quick. We all know that there's going to be, traffic is going to impact things. Overland is very very crowded, and it's in my concern that people from the Hawkins Development will have a hard time getting onto Maple Grove during busy times. It's just that impact. I believe that due to the limited parking in the development, we're going to have overflow parking coming into our development. And we have narrow streets. And also, I think that some of the Hawkins Development people will be going through our development to access Maple Grove as well because it's to give them more more room. They're so close to the intersection, it doesn't give them a lot of time to get into the lane they need to get into. The zoning, that's a, that's a huge jump from six homes for that piece of property to a hundred and seventy four. It does not seem consistent with the surrounding properties to me. Another concern I have is the quality of life in Mediterranean Court. I think it'll negatively impact us. Lack of privacy with our apartments overlooking their backyards. A four story unit is kind of new because of our density program. They were a three story, now they're four, and part of that is a four story unit. I'm concerned about the overflow parking. Again. Increased traffic is going to be a safety concern for the people in Mediterranean Court. So what I'm asking is you please respect the quality of life for the people that live in Mediterranean Court. Because I think it'll certainly be a negative impact on us. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Hey, next up, whoever wants to come up.
How you doing, sir?
Hi.
Ladies, sir. Fortune by Esteros, eighty six fifteen West Vincent Street, Boise, Idaho. I live on Vincent Street. It's a dead end street. It's a it's a real old street. It's probably got like three inches of pavement, nothing underneath it. We don't got no city lights. We don't got no city sewer. We don't got much. It's always been a small street, surrounded by maybe six or eight houses. We're all on wells there, you know, the wells are kind of getting sparse and dry. The more concrete and pavement you put around it, the less water goes into our our water table so we can get water. I've already had a water scare from my well. Luckily, we ended up getting more water. And as far as those giant apartments are, the gentleman over there said that last Hawkins building was consistent with another apartment complex that was right next to it. Those would be nothing consistent with anything that's around us. I mean, we're all one level houses, humble houses, and this guy wants to stack people on top of people. The traffic that is going to go through my street is going to destroy my street, destroy my neighborhood. You know, I got little kids, some are still little. And I just would like you guys to deny this whole thing and maybe just put regular houses in a regular neighborhood there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Councilman and Council. My name is Jonathan Newell. I live on seventeen oh two South Vinel Street, which is on the corner of Vincent and Vinel, which is about a hundred, let's say a hundred twenty yards from the proposed development. I've lived there for seven years. I'm a real estate broker of twelve years. I bought that property because I liked the one acre. Back then, the traffic wasn't as bad. The traffic's already gotten overly overwhelmed. It's insane. There is no way, I'm telling you as a real estate professional, that that Vincent Street, if it's open to this, will support it, period. Secondly, I didn't know about the airport. Well, I knew about the airport because I bought it with the intentions of knowing that I didn't like close neighbors and I like to have fun, so I didn't mind having the airplane fly over every now and then. After the first two days, just like you said earlier, I started ignoring it. What I'm thinking after I'm hearing about this, what is it to? Now, I'm on R one, so that's only one house per acre. So every house on that street is R one. So what I'm gonna do, if that's proposed, I'm gonna sell my house as soon as possible because it's going to devalue my house, devalue it at least a hundred grand in my guesstimation, shooting from the hip. But I was just sitting here thinking about it. What's it? For me, highest and best use is what we use in the real estate world. What's going to stop me from coming here and getting approved to go twenty eight, twenty houses on my one acre before I sell it? It's going to be worth way more. And how's that going to future affect the airport as well? And there's probably, I don't know, ten one acre lots are one that are right next to that property. I think you're potentially open up Pandora's box. I think you should deny this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley McClellan. I live at eight eight four five West Mediterranean Court. I submitted written testimony on behalf of our neighborhood with a few other neighbors. We went around collectively, decided on a few points, the following being five units per acre, limiting development to two stories. Mohican and Vinel and Vincent staying close to through traffic and protecting Vincent's well water. Out of the twenty nine homes just on Mediterranean Court, twenty four were talked to. There was one denial for unreached neighbors. That's an eighty six percent approval on this, if you will, or if you are just looking at the twenty four homes, that's a ninety five percent approval, which puts us at a ninety five percent rate of denial of this project in our neighborhood. We all are in agreement of keeping it to two stories or less because all of our homes are one story, some two stories. And just overall, we're worried about how this is going to negatively affect the traffic on our street. We have young kids. We have islands with landscaping that propose barriers. There's a U turn problem in our neighborhood. So that alone just like affects the the traffic. But I just also wanted to stay on behalf of like the living with the airplane noise. I have three kids, three and under. Got a busy life, lots of noise with the airplanes. I am constantly having my kids crying over this noise. It's almost daily our windows like shake or house rattles when the jets go over. And I think that is something to consider if you're putting in apartments just with additional like families, additional children with the height as well. So yeah, I just wanted to show the statistics. I know that there was a map submitted on behalf of the neighborhood as well, showing who was in favor of denying this project. And so I just want you guys to consider that going forward because you guys are appointed by us, the city, and just the surrounding community is in denial of this project. And I think that we've all collectively come together, just hoping that we'll have your guys' support in this denial. So thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do you have one, two? Go ahead, Councilmember Halber.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna say, thank you for gathering data and bringing that data back to us and letting us know. Sometimes there are people in support of something and sometimes people are against. We don't always have people coming and saying like, there actually are some people who are okay with this. And we've had some examples of some past neighborhoods who've collected that data before in the past. It's helpful. And then also, thank you for actually telling us what you would support because we don't have that happen a lot either. A lot of times it's a very binary decision, yes or no. And that kind of puts us in a tough spot instead of saying, what would we actually like to have here? My question, I guess, for you really has to do with probably Vincent Street. And I think that, did you make a reference to people doing U turns in Vincent Street?
The U turns are on Mediterranean Court.
Oh, gotcha. Great. I guess one of the the things that I could use your input on or potentially other people as well is that there's two stub streets here, streets that come to an end. And the reason that we stub those streets is so that when something does get developed, those streets actually end up connecting. And usually when there's, you know, those additional streets, it creates more ways for people to get in and out instead of on a bunch of different areas. So I guess I'm trying to figure out our, it sounds like you would be okay with two stories. I'm trying to figure out if you're okay with those streets being connected, knowing that there's stub streets at this point.
Yes, I can't speak on behalf of the whole neighborhood, but just like gathered ideas and stuff. I would say that a lot of the reason that we do not want that road open to through traffic is because of the number of units. We're worried about the parking on our street and just the extra through traffic. Vincent and Vinel do not have sidewalks. They're very unkept roads. Mediterranean is a well kept road, but there are barriers and islands in the way, which really affects visibility. So I think just collectively, we are okay with like multifamily units going in there. If it was limited to two stories and probably between like five to ten units per acre, we would not care if that was open. And I also think too, like, I think it would be nice to go back to maybe considering some sort of commercial usage. That area kind of in front on Overland in Bird Street is already commercial. And they've been nice neighbors. We haven't had any issues with them. They are also only one to two stories as well. So the transition for the four stories is not there.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Willis, do you have something?
Hello, my name is Nicholas Sites. My wife and I just moved into eight nine seven four West Mediterranean Court. And we moved into one of the houses that did not sign those documents. So we just wanted to add that we would have signed those documents had we moved in while they were circulating. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Willis.
Nicholas, we come back up here. Sorry, you were almost to your seat. You were so close. Well, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're new to the neighborhood and you probably didn't expect this to be one of the things you'd have to think about.
Not at all.
Yeah. Here's what I'm thinking through, and I would like your perspective. So there's a couple of things that we can do up here. We can deny the appeal. And folks have to go back to the drawing board. We could approve it with conditions. If you were looking for a place that could get housing that area, but would not have a negative impact on on your life and your new home that you just purchased, what would be your ideal?
I mean, ideal would be some sort of like new businesses to go around and continue to walk through. And I personally love walking. I, on average, walk like, like four to five miles a day on my off days. So I love walking and exploring new areas, finding new restaurants, new places to hang out with my wife. And so I would prefer something like that where maybe it wasn't like so big, but like a small business. If we were going to go with more housing for the area, something that doesn't exceed like two stories to tower over our brand new house.
So Nicholas, is your is your concern, I think what I hear is that you'd love mixed use because, you know, we want more walkable places.
Yes.
And if you, if it was designated as residential only, you're really concerned about the height. Is that?
Yes.
And basically the density that is being, that is being. Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Vaughn. I live at eight four two five West Vincent Street. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for letting me speak. So a lot of testimony tonight about sound and noise and that. And one of the questions, Councilman Morales, that you asked was about the impact and the potential negatives that it could cause. We just had a huge one that happened. We lost the F thirty five. And if we'd gotten the F thirty five here, it would have been a huge financial boom to our community. And we lost it because of noise. And that's something that in the future is going to continue to happen. We're going to be presented with opportunities of who knows what they would possibly want to bring to us. And it's going to be, you know, denied by the public because of noise. And the more density we put around the airport, the stronger that's going to get, which I think is a huge negative. I see Councilman Steed or Stead? So I missed at the very, very start of tonight's meeting, you talked about another development. And you made the comment about the roads going into the development and how they were gonna get the road developed before they started their construction and everything. So that's kind of where my whole point is with this. I live on Vincent Street. And it is, it's, it's pretty narrow. It's broke up. It has no sidewalks or anything like that. And because it's a dead end, a lot of people walk on that. Every day, there's people walking up and down, walking their dogs, just going for a walk, see kids at night walking on it. And right now, that road services eleven houses. And the traffic's really minimal. There are, there's a chiropractor that just opened up a business on the right side, but they all park on that road. When that happened, it increased the traffic by like twenty five percent. And so now you got to kind of watch. Now, somebody was asking about U turns on that road. And it does happen a lot because people are trying to avoid the stoplight at Overland Maple Grove and cut around and go. And they don't know it's a dead end, so they come ripping around and we see them fly down our road and then thirty seconds later, they fly back because they discover it's a dead end. And I understand that we have to have growth, I have to have development. I understand that. And I know that this property is eventually going to have something on it. My request is whoever develops it, make them bring the road up to current standards and make it so that we can still walk on that road without getting have to watch over our shoulder with cars coming by. So I guess that's, that's my biggest ask on this property is just that.
Tom, if we do punch Vincent all the way through, though, they only speed by one time and then they won't speed by on the way back.
Yeah, but you're talking now a hundred and seventy, how many more units? And there was talk about the the bus stop.
I do, I do have a question for you on that. Is there Crimson, does anybody live on Crimson Rose here? Oh, excuse me, Mediterranean. Okay, we've heard it then. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
So there was talk about the bus stop and that. And if you live in that development, you want to go to Walmart to buy your groceries and you're not going to drive, you're not going to go to the bus stop and catch the bus, go to Walmart. You're going to walk down Vincent Street and then walk over to Walmart. And so that's going to increase the foot traffic on that road a lot, which it's a recipe for disaster as it sits now. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just make a comment about? I think the F thirty fives, it was noted that we lost them because of maybe something development related, but that really, the National Guard was looking at a handful of sites and they found two sites that they liked better than us. And I don't know that maybe some neighborhoods that I know of would like to like to think that they helped to move that project along to a different, a different place. But I think that just for accuracy's sake, I think there were a couple of other sites that were just better than ours.
Okay. Any other public testimony?
My name is Max Veneras. I live at eight nine five two West Mediterranean Court.
Not Crimson Rose.
Not Crimson. It's
Not Crimson. It's mislabeled on Google Maps. So I also personally walked the neighborhood with Ashley and got signatures. I probably personally talked about half of the, half of the homes that came at the door on Mediterranean as well as a lot of people on Vincent. Everybody's unanimously opposed to this development as it currently stands. Nobody is in support of it in our neighborhood anywhere. So we were talking briefly about the, the traffic issue. According to ACHD's study, they did not perform a traffic impact study. The reason why they didn't is they said it would only create 76 trips during their peak hour. They estimated it was 900 total trips would be created into this area by the zone. That it's on the assumption that there's currently nine trips coming in and out of basically the abandoned building that's currently on the parcel. So there's zero there. The other thing that doesn't take into account is an existing issue that's on Mediterranean Court and the existing road conditions that are on Vincent, both of which are poor. The existing, the pre-existing issue Mediterranean Court was an unintended consequence from the 2022 safety improvements when they redesigned the intersection of Maple Grove and Overland. The business complex at the southeast corner, you, they cannot go southbound. They cannot make a left-hand turn to go southbound down that. So what they do is they come whipping through Mediterranean. Or when Overland and Maple Grove is congested, they come whipping down Vincent, trying to make that, uh, trying to bypass it. So not only for that 76 number that ACHD has, that is, that, that's a lot lower than it should be. The, the real number would be higher and it should warrant that traffic impact study, especially because ACHD, according to their same comments, they don't have current traffic numbers on Mediterranean, oh, I'm sorry, on Maple Grove. They do not have current traffic numbers. So as far as the noise at my house goes, I did, I downloaded a couple of apps for, for decimal readers. Just tell me what it is. You know, when the jets, specifically when the jets were, you know, flying over the house. I have gotten readings of over 100 on the apps that even go that high. I have seen it. I, I regularly, on an almost daily basis, when I can catch the plane right as it's overhead, I'll get readings of 70 or 80. So I mean, it, it, it's up there, right? So, so the maps that show it's only 65 decibels, it, I don't know how often that is. But OSHA actually requires hearing protection when you're, when you're consistently around 85-plus decibels. Right? The other difference is that, that decimal system, it's logarithmic, meaning it's a power scale. So if something is 10 decibels louder, that's 10 times. If it's 20 decibels louder, going from, you know, 40 to 60, that's, that's 100 times, yeah, that's 100 times loud. I think that's my time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in person? Okay, anybody online? Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have at least four online. First up is Alexandra Munder.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Alexandra Munder. I live at 2222 West Cootney Street. And I would like to just start by saying that I think this situation is a perfect example of how the public process is supposed to work. And I want to say thanks to the council for playing your very important role. It's a situation where risks and benefits from multiple perspectives need to be considered as a whole and with the needs of the overall community in mind. And I believe this is an opportunity for council to make a policy decision that supports the needs of our community is it, and is in alignment with its stated goals to provide housing near activity centers. With regard to the potential noise impacts, land use decisions should, I think, be made with the recognition that different households have different priorities and concerns. And that with abundant housing, people have the opportunity to make the choices that are right for them and their families. So some people make a less about noise impacts than shortening their commutes or living within walking distance of shopping and restaurants. And I think that we should let future residents make those decisions for themselves. And I'd like to point out that in practicality, modern multifamily buildings are likely better equipped to mitigate noise for their residents because of the higher building codes that they're subject to. Regarding other concerns from the airport, as great an economic driver as the airport is, a city's ability to provide a variety of housing types, near transit, near jobs, and near people's daily needs is also an incredible economic driver. And it's exactly the type of development that Boise needs if it wants to preserve its livability as it grows. The area around this parcel is nearly fully built out. And as the developer pointed out, it's developed at densities well above five units per acre. So I don't think that this project would be reasonably considered a residential encroachment in the airport area. That encroachment has already occurred. This site is abutted by RTO and MX zoning, which both support unlimited density. And it's exactly the type of infill location at which the city is asking for housing to be built. So a rezone of this kind would not be unusual for the city to approve. And in this instance, the low-density requirements seem arbitrary and do not really address concerns about potential noise impacts. What this requirement does do, however, is raise the cost of housing, reduce the number of people who have opportunity to choose to live close to their work and daily needs, and limits or prevents the potential for increasing walkability and the frequency of transit in the area. A residential density of about 20 units per acre is a general minimum target needed to support transit with 15-minute headways. And density is also required to support public investment with neighborhoods with poor infrastructure like sidewalks for pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra.
Mr. Mayor, this is Allison Gillespie.
Thank you. Allison, you have three minutes. Can you hear us, Allison? Allison, you there?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Allison Gillespie and I live at 3996 South Daisy Way in Boise. But my husband Todd and I own the house and property located at 8717 West Vincent Street in Boise, which is part of the land that this project is proposed to be built on. My husband was raised in this house. And yes, houses and land were wonderful when he was growing up. The planes coming and going over the neighborhood for years. And he said that the, the planes were actually quieter than they were 50 years, or now quieter than they were 50 years ago. And it didn't stop family life. The air traffic hasn't stopped people wanting to live in this area. And this area has grown. It has wonderful parks. It has religious communities. It has everything within walking distance. And yet, we're still building single-family homes. Just a couple of comments. Vincent Street is already being impacted by the commercial businesses on Overland, where the people are parking on Vincent and visiting commercial. Also, when you think about it, the two wells that are on Vincent and the property that is backed up onto Maple Grove, the two wells would be vacated. So those, that will be lesser on the water table. I, I concern myself with the commercial idea on this land. The, the two subdivisions would still be impacted by the cars and travel and light pollution. Honestly, I would prefer that Vincent does remain, remain a dead-end street and the road through the project be emergency use only. But I'm coming to this with, my concern is housing. I've been in the mortgage lending industry for over 30 years. And I have seen how the increase in home prices and demand have affected so many Boiseans in the past, especially in the last decade. I can personally attest to the hundreds of individuals and families that have applied for loans over the recent years, only to be told that they can't purchase what is on the market in Boise or Ada County. And what is on the market in this particular area is only single-family homes. And if people cannot afford to rent or buy or even want to live in a single-family home, they are missing out on the opportunity to live in this neighbor because, neighborhood because there is literally nothing else available. High-density multifamily housing is needed in this area and it meets the intent of deep print Boise. To some, an apartment building or an apartment might be the only home that a family can afford when starting out. And apartments are becoming a popular choice for individuals and families with active lifestyles. Yes, it is, it, it doesn't look like the standard single-family residences that we have. But Blueprint Boise's intent was to offer multifamily and higher-density dwellings in infill areas just like this to help ease the burden and, and not have the sprawl that we have. This is a highly walkable area and it would be great to be able to have more people be able to enjoy this neighborhood and allow more families to live and grow and prosper here. I think Hawkins Company has done a really good job in planning a project.
Allison.
Yes.
Your time is up. But thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
All right, Clerk, we have a few more.
Mr. Mayor, this is William Bartlett.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead, William.
Great. My name's William Bartlett, 8703 West Vincent Street. I own the property directly east of the proposed development. And so, you know, I, one thing I wanted to mention is that the, the lady on Cootney is that she obviously isn't familiar with this neighborhood at all, where this apartment complex doesn't blend. As Director Hupp had mentioned, the other one got the, the approval and the turnaround because it blended somewhat with the surrounding area. Even though these properties next to the development are MX zoned, they're all single-level individual properties on there or individual buildings. They, it isn't high-density, even on the commercial side. So we've got the commercial work across the street. It adds very little traffic. The chiropractor is probably the worst as far as parking on, on our, our street. And this development being 45 feet tall is taller than anything in the area. There is no transition space. It's, the, the one building proposed is right outside my kitchen window. And it's, uh, I'll be looking up at people that, that it's very close to my property line. And so, you know, I, as far as following precedent before, there is no subtle transition between this apartment mega-complex in our neighborhood. And I, I think the impacts are, are absolutely huge for the infrastructure. If Boise City is willing to develop all the infrastructure around this to handle the traffic, you know, we do get a lot of turnarounds and a lot of them are in my driveway on this street already because they, they think it goes through. I can't imagine the traffic complication with 174 units with, you know, 900 car trips a day. Let's say we split it half and half between Mediterranean and us. You know, that's 450 extra car trips. It's, it's a lot. And every apartment complex I've seen that has gone in of any size, the overflow parking consumes all the surrounding streets around the development. So I respectfully request that this conditional use permit is denied.
Thank you, William. It seemed like we had one more hand raised.
Mr. Mayor, we have two more. This is Cooper Sharp.
Cooper, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm wanting to get on to discuss my support for this project. I had the privilege back in 2022 to participate with a regional developer who actually developed a piece of ground about a quarter mile west of this project along Overland. And we were fit with a similar constraint with the airport overlay district. And when we got through that process, working with the airport and working with the city, we were actually told that the requirement was an old requirement and that it would not be applicable to our project. And so the requirement was waived and we were not required to minimize the density on our project. So that was the Box Elder Creek subdivision, approximately four-acre development just in front of the, the college there along Overland. In the, the rejection previously by the Planning Commission and discussed earlier in this meeting, it was rejected based on the restriction of the airport overlay. And as has been detailed in this meeting and several other instances across the years, that overlay being an old standard and being based on an old requirement back in the 90s is not up to current modern ordinances and codes. And we, the city has shown that not lack of faith or trust in the overlay, but that it is an old ordinance by approving several subdivisions or developments in the area. So I am in support of this subdivision. And I do believe that this type of housing is needed in the area. And denying it solely based on the airport overlay, I think we've shown, the city has shown that, that we've, we've made exceptions to that in the past. And that is all.
Thank you. Clerk, we have one more.
Mr. Mayor, our last person online is Jane Simpson.
Hello, James, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, Jane, excuse me. Jane, go ahead.
I'm, I live at 8955 West Mediterranean Court. I live two houses off Maple Grove. I have been in a lot of communication with the ACHD, trying to get them to do something with a, with a traffic study. Because I get so many people that turn U-turns in front of our first median strip that I have literally almost been hit by a car two or three times. It is crazy how it has just become part of the Maple Grove traffic because they can't turn south, go in one direction or north the other. It's just, that's, they do it every day. They just turn these U-turns. I am very concerned with the traffic that it will put on our road. I'm very concerned with the over-parking. For the 1.5 parking spots for each one of these apartments, it's, they're gonna have to park on our street. So that concerns me as well. And an even bigger concern, they have, uh, we've discussed the water. Well, the wells in this area are not good wells in the summertime. Our water smells funny. It drains down in the streets. You can smell the stink of it. Three houses down on Mediterranean, with the new influx of water, that worries me that we are going to have even less water. I have not seen any water study, nor have I seen any traffic study. And I feel those two things were very important in order to put another 175 people in this area. And then also, four stories looking down on a one-story house, nobody would want to live in our subdivision. Our property values would just plummet. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak.
Thank you, Jane. All right, any members of the public would continue to wish to testify? Anybody online, in person? Okay, I think we are going to have Rebecca, if you want to come up. I just want to give you an opportunity for a rebuttal and then we'll have the applicant for their rebuttal. And then we're just gonna have Rebecca up first. I know I'm due. Rebecca, there were some comments made by the applicant. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to, to address maybe a position that you've had on the sound issues related to the airport. And then, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It is a complex, complex issue as we can all see. And there's a number of competing issues that have to be considered. And the airport endeavors to be a good neighbor, but inevitably there will be noise that results from the type of activity that we do, which is why zoning and land use is so important. I think some, some neighbors testified that despite being outside the 65-decibel level, they still experience noise that is not pleasant to them. I would note that, as we talked about before, noise is subjective. I think that the applicant pointed out that this level of noise is compatible according to the FAA definition of noise. And I would agree with that statement. But I would add that the point of the airport influence area or impact area is that we are protecting the community and the operation of the airport, not based on what we have today, but on what we could have in the future. So I think that's an important distinction. I would also note that the, the testimony that he played was at a different time, under a different zoning code. As you know, each project has its own set of criteria and consideration for improve, for approval. It's not intended to set precedent. Yet, we can see that there is definitely a tendency, once we approve one, to want to use that as a precedent. And I think the more that we stray from our existing zoning, the larger the issue will become. And I would like to thank Counselor Morales for his comments about F-35s. He is 100% correct that while noise is a consideration, it is not the deciding factor in our military base aircraft. And that is a very possible change that we could have at one point in the future, that we could see increased noise, either because of military, NIFC, cargo operations. that we could see increased noise either because of military, NIFC, cargo operations, a variety of different things can have an impact on the noise contours and create a change. So with that, I would urge council to not make an exception for an existing application, but rather that we consider looking at a policy as a whole now that we have the new zoning code that has been approved. Thank you.
Rebecca, I got one question on that. Is it fair to say that when you made the comments in twenty twenty-one, that there was an expectation that we would take some of these issues up when we revised the zoning code?
There were a number of things that we were considering, including yes, that we would take these issues up as we move forward after the new zoning code has been adopted. I think some of the other considerations that we looked at at the time was, again, the surrounding area as something that needs to be looked at holistically, not just with a single area. And what happened is we looked at it as a single situation and now it's being brought up again as a new standard that we should follow, which may or may not be true.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Question for Rebecca before you sit down.
Sorry Rebecca, you're not, we're not done yet. We're trying to, we're trying to make sure that nobody has to watch the debate, so keep it here as long as it takes.
There's a debate right here.
Yeah. So earlier you brought up that we're sort of in the process of engaging in the airport master plan. And I'm gonna make an assumption that the master plan's not gonna involve the airport getting smaller because we are consistently growing, 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 building parking garages, doing a variety of different things. To me, that means more planes. It might mean bigger planes. It might mean additional runways. I don't know what it means. So when you're talking about a master plan, I know that there's all sorts of engagement that happens with different stakeholders in the process, but there's probably some things that you can already envision we might see in a master plan like that. So can you talk about how this master planning process might inform a little bit of our area of airport influence?
The very first thing that we'll do as part of a master plan is a forecast, which will look at the planning horizon of twenty years. So we'll forecast what we think travel and passenger employments and operations might look like in twenty years. We'll also do a facility inventory of what facilities do we have today and what facilities will we need in the future. One of the things that was included in the last master plan, what was considered beyond the planning horizon, was a third runway. We think that it, the third runway could be within this planning horizon. It will depend on the forecast that we see. But there's a number of things that will come up. Land use planning will be a piece of it that will also be considered as part of the master plan.
And during that master planning process, do you think that that could influence any changes to the airport influence area?
I think they, they certainly can influence, impact the airport influence area. I don't think they have to be done together. I think we can look at the airport influence area separate from the master plan process. And I think, I think our local zoning and our blueprint Boise and the work that PDS has done would better inform the zoning piece than the master plan itself, but they certainly are related.
Great, thank you.
Okay, applicant?
Mr. Mayor, in order to check myself.
If you could get five minutes, you got five minutes on the clock.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor. In order to ensure that everything that we are saying is correct and accurate, we have brought on an acoustical engineer as a consultant to help us basically fact-check ourselves. Jesse, could we please bring up the slideshow? I'd like to just point to the history of the NEMs very quickly, and I'm just gonna have Earl talk a little bit about probabilities of what needs to happen as, as it expands. So if we could pause the time while it's... Thank you. This map shows a very distinct trend that started around two thousand of noise exposure maps shrinking dramatically. And there is a reason for that, and I'll let Earl share a few facts about that.
Mr. Mayor, member of the councils, my name is Earl Mullins. I'm Principal Acoustical Engineer of Mullins Acoustics. This is my fortieth year in the acoustics business, and I've done a lot of work with airports all up and down the West Coast. The history diagram that's up there right now shows that planes are generally getting quieter and they're getting quieter at a rate faster than the number of operations would further expand the contour. A little factoid with most transportation sources being airplanes, roads or rails is you have to double the number of operations to add three decibels to the contour. So to take the sixty-five contour and expand it out to this LDN sixty footprint in the twenty twenty contour, the latest one, you'd have to have about five times as many runway operations as you do right now. And I'd just like to say a couple of other things real quick and then get back to Ethan's time. I have worked on airports from LAX to Anchorage. I've worked extensively with Anchorage International Airport. Boise Airport is the only airport in my personal professional experience that has an airport influence area map. Every other airport that I've ever worked on, every other military base that I've ever worked on have used the noise exposure maps colloquially known as the noise contours.
Thanks, Earl. Mr. Mayor, with my remaining few minutes, I'd just like to address a couple of the other concerns. First of all, I would like to say that we also appreciate and our, we appreciate the airport and its importance in the community, and we have absolutely no intention to limit the operations. I want to make that really, really clear. And we agree that we must maintain land use compatibility. As an investor in this land, we're gonna pour millions of dollars into its success, and we want it to succeed. Why would we invest in something that is immediately gonna become a non-conforming or incompatible use? We wouldn't. That's a terrible investment decision. And we do appreciate the fact that, that essentially the city said, let's take a look at this. Let's, you know, this is in the airport influence area. Let's study this. We, it, it made us take a closer look. And with the research that we've done, consultants that we've hired, we feel extremely confident in our investment here. Another thing I'd like to mention, perhaps ACHD could take this comment into consideration, is that we sincerely hope that our, we're, we're paying about three hundred thousand dollars in transportation impact fees on this project. We sincerely hope that they are used on Vincent Street. It would be fantastic if that, those monies could be used to improve the streets adjacent to our development. It would benefit the neighborhood, existing neighborhood. It would benefit the new residents of the neighborhood, and it would allow and make it even more walkable. And that's typically how growth happens, right? New things come in. It makes, it improves infrastructure and generally improves quality of life. I mean, that's the goal of cities. Finally, I'd just like to mention that, you know, the current height limit in the MX three zone is seventy feet. That's immediately north of our project. To the south, the current height limit is forty feet. I could purchase a single-family home in that neighborhood, demo it, and build a three-story forty-foot structure.
Ethan, if I could just, like on that, I, I get that argument. I looked that up myself. I think after hearing the testimony of the neighborhood, though, fifteen-foot, forty-five-feet VFW that's twenty feet tall, like, they want something that isn't abstract, like in theory is a transition. They want a real transition in, in the actual neighborhood, not what could be there. So I guess what considerations has the applicant given to what a transition could look like?
Mr. Mayor, that, that is a great question. We feel that three stories is an appropriate number of stories to transition to a single-family neighborhood. Many of us live in two-story houses. One story above that obviously is three stories, and that is what we're proposing across a drive aisle parking area and then that building. We specifically heard that comment in the neighborhood meetings, and we addressed it. We originally had four stories there, and we actually reduced the height to reflect and respect the comments from the neighbor, which were, please provide a transition. If I may, just to say one additional thing, you know, this new modern zoning code is aspirational, right? We, we want to see seventy-foot, I'm not formerly a city planner, so I had these discussions with my colleagues, but these discussions always revolved around, we want to see seventy-foot buildings in the MX three. That's why we're maxing out the height to seventy feet. So I think on that, on that MX side, it is very reasonable to potentially experience that in hopefully the near future. Those are the goals of the city. And so when we have seventy-foot single-family home, which is the kind of the alternative to what we're proposing, that's more of an abrupt transition than what we're proposing with a three-story building between something that is, could be taller.
All right, I think we're good. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I'm gonna build on, on Mr. Mayor's question. Modern zoning code in certain zones require four stories. Something I don't really like, but we live with. Did you give any consideration for this project not to go to four stories for the entire project? You've, you've talked about, you know, you have a transition that you, that you feel meets that need, but did you ever think about, was that ever on the table to not have four stories?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, you know, we, we started with four stories and we started there and we started considering how could we kind of improve the transition? And it would certainly, you know, be, there would be less houses there or less units to go to three stories on the north. That northern boundary is borders commercial, so we felt like there was really no impact there. And really, the impact was just truly the number of people in the project. And, and that's homes for people. So there's a trade-off between four stories more homes, three stories fewer homes. We chose three stories on the impactful side, and we chose four stories on the north side because we're, we're trying to balance competing interests.
Councilmember Halbert?
Mr. Mayor, Ethan, so something I think that we've heard from our planning staff and from our, our airport director is that with a conditional use permit, we're sort of looking for small changes, not really large ones. And when we're, when we're looking at FAA regulations, we're potentially not wanting to alarm somebody with a pattern that we're gonna give unlimited restrictions for density on something that was previously very restricted. So we're going to very, very far extremes. And then we've got some community, community members here who are offering up some different numbers, some five to ten. And then other ones we're seeing, you know, twelve point four as far as like a limit goes to a, you know, a suburban area. If that's where it landed at twelve point four, like, does that eliminate any possibilities for development? Is there a possibility to work within those parameters or is that the end of the application for you and your team?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, that's a fantastic question. We're not single-family home developers. We would pass on this project and there would be single-family homes here. That's a twelve-point-four units per acre is kind of skinny, small lot, single-family homes.
Okay, great.
Mr. Mayor, in that scenario, any kind of idea and ballpark on what one of those homes would cost?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Morales, that's a fantastic question. Are there any Realtors in the audience that I could lean on?
Never mind, never mind.
Five hundred thousand perhaps? Six hundred?
Councilmember Willis?
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if we will have an opportunity to ask staff? Okay.
Councilmember Stitt?
Yeah, I saw, I just saw a hand go up in the audience, but I just wanted to ask if we could explain that we don't take public comments at this point.
Public portion of the test of the hearing has been closed.
Okay, council members, Councilmember Willis, you have a question for staff?
I do.
Ethan, I think we're good. Thank you.
So Jesse, walk me through this because let's say that this application was a mile away and it wasn't in this impact area. The noise would not be an issue. It would, it would not be in front of us today. What I'm trying to understand is what the discussion would be for a rezone if noise was not part of the equation. And I think we've, we've hit around that in different places. I, I'm asking you to be a little bit of a fortune teller. I understand that I'm doing that, but I'm trying to understand if we took noise out of the equation, what would, what would we allow for density?
Mr. Mayor, council members, so as the rezone and the comprehensive land use amendment go, that's also on the table today as you stated. Currently, the property is, has a designation of suburban, which would allow R one A, R one B, R one C. The applicant is requesting a land use amendment to change that to compact, which would allow R two, which is what they are requesting. So those are the things that are being considered today, and the R two again does not have a density limit.
Councilmember Halbert?
You, you may have just answered this. I wasn't quite paying attention enough.
I'm, thank you for saying that. No, I feel like I can say it in the future, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's paying attention. Was I paying attention enough? It's hard to say. So we've got, we've got two different things here. We've got an appeal and then we've got, we've got a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone. If the comprehensive plan amendment and rezone was passed, we would be saying that this is now zoned as compact and we would say that it now is available for R two, which means unlimited density. But it's still in the airport influence area. And I think that that's where our second part is getting to is that as long as it's in the, we might be saying that this is actually maybe the right zoning for the spot if it weren't in the airport influence area. But the fact that it's in the airport influence area, it's still gonna need a conditional use permit to actually build at that density. Am I getting that correct?
Mr. Mayor, council members, if you look on the screen that shows the decisions in front of you today. So first of all, you would be looking at the comp plan amendment and the rezone. We just discussed what that would look like. And then the conditional use permit is the appeal subject today. The Planning and Zoning Commission denied that for the request to increase the density above the five units acre under the B one airport influence area. Your options today would be to uphold or reverse that denial based on the standards of review for appeal. With that conditional use permit, if you were to approve that and add additional density, you could add those conditions that you'd asked me about earlier. Sorry, it's late. Did I answer your questions?
Is, was your question, the basis for the conditional use permit is the airport influence area? Like the request for density in B one of airport influence area?
Yeah, I guess I'm, maybe I'm misreading our, the way that it is listed today. I'm not reading the CPA twenty-four and CAR twenty-four dash one as an appeal.
They're not.
They're not an appeal.
They're not. Those are recommendations of denial from the Planning and Zoning Commission for a final decision today.
Great. And so what I'm saying is that if those were approved, we would potentially be saying that we think this is the right zone for this area if it wasn't in the airport influence area. That like this is actually the right stuff, but if we...
I, I think, I think you're, you're neutral on that. It would, would be my opinion that these are recommendations made, but that they still could not develop the property because it's in the B one airport influence area.
That's correct. Unless the airport influence area changed. And then that area would then be an R two zone and labeled as suburban.
Jesse, can you make sure that you follow what we were saying there?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm hearing that you're talking about if you wanted to change the compact in R two but not overturn the conditional use denial, then it would be zoned R two. The land use designation would be compact. However, they would still be limited to that five units an acre based on the airport influence area. If that airport influence area were to change, who knows what that time span would be, what that would look like if this would come out of that density cap of the B one airport influence area. That would be something that is a future concern at that point.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Mr. Mayor, Jesse, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you- I'm gonna give you a story problem. I, I wanna make sure that I have clarity on this. It is possible to approve the, the comprehensive use amendment and the rezone that would be separate from the conditional use permit. So in other words, we could change what this land could do and deny what's, what is before us to go in front of it or to be built on it.
I, I wanna, I wanna add one thing on there is that if you did the first two things you said.
Yeah.
And did not, uh, and you denied the appeal, it would still be restricted, as Jesse said, to five units per based on the B one airport, airport influence area. Am I correct, Jesse?
That's correct.
So it'd be moot essentially.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the R two zoning does have other uses that are allowed within that zone by right. Um, some commercial uses specifically that wouldn't be allowed, um, in the zoning that it has now. Uh, that could be other options for development on an R two parcel. However, the density would still be that cap of five minutes per acre.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for staff? Okay, I think a motion is in order.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, first, uh, I move that CPA twenty four dash one and CAR twenty four dash one, a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation from suburban to compact and rezone of approximately six point one two acres from A one, A one zero open land, very low density with an airport influence overlay to R two, A one, um, O resident compact with an airport influence overlay. Uh, one seven seven zero South Maple Grove be approved and ask staff to bring back findings.
So your motion was for CPA twenty four dash one and CAR twenty four dash one?
Yes.
And it was specific to that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I've got.
Do you wanna, would you like to consider these separately?
Uh, I could keep going.
Let's just keep considering.
Okay. So I also move that the appeal of the planning zoning, this is a big one, so I'm gonna do my best to keep my thoughts organized. Uh, move that the appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision on CUP twenty four dash twelve for a conditional use permit to exceed the density limit of the B one airport influence area for multi-family development comprised of one hundred and seventy four units at one seven seven zero South Maple Grove Road be approved, subject to the following conditions. That there, okay, so that there is an error in the decision of the commission and the decision of the planning and zoning be overturned and that we ask staff to return with findings that include conditions supported by the following. In site design, we'd like to see these changes before the associated SUV or design review are submitted and these conditions seek to provide a better transition from the commercial use in the activity center to the north and the low density, single family homes to the south and to reduce the impermeable surfacing. The applicant shall provide a transition from the commercial design to the north to the single family homes to the south. All buildings along Maple Grove shall have a primary entrance that is clearly visible and directly accessible from the public sidewalk. The applicant shall reduce impermeable surface parking and provide greater open spaces for residents. Regarding connectivity, the proposed roadway alignment doesn't meet ACHD standards and contains unsafe conflict points. These conditions seek to realign the roadway and provide better connectivity and conditions for bikes and pedestrians. The conditions include the roadway must be reoriented to reduce conflict points while providing safe vehicle, bike and pedestrian connectivity to the existing roadway network. The applicant shall work with the planning team and ACHD to identify the best roadway configuration. All public roadways shall have detached sidewalks with minimum ten foot wide planter strips. Provide a micro mobility station along Maple Grove behind the public sidewalk and within a public use easement. Widen the primary east-west pedestrian connection through the site to be ten feet wide, including a defined pedestrian, included in a defined pedestrian plan. Provide a public pathway easement on property pathways. In regards to landscaping, landscaping must be revised to include the following. Increase the perimeter landscape buffer to minimum ten feet wide and include a minimum of class, of one class three tree every sixty feet. Required trees should only be class one species where there are conflicts with overhead utilities. Uh, no calorie pair, calorie pair trees. Provide all required landscape planter islands within parking areas. All required landscape islands shall contain class two or class three trees. Landscape islands containing pathways or other objects must be widened to accommodate the required trees. And landscape islands serving two rows of parking must contain two trees. In regards to the airport, the applicant must provide the following to limit the airport operations, to limit the impacts to airport operations. The applicant must submit a sound mitigation plan for approval by the airport that insulates all outdoor, all indoor areas to the airport influence area B one standards. Um, a record aviation easement on the property is required prior to the issuance of building permits. Prior to any future tenant signing a lease, the applicant shall disclose information regarding the potential noise impacts associated with the airport operations and overhead flights.
Is that written anywhere?
It's taken down. The, um, so before there's a, before there's a potential second, I would just ask unanimous consent that the motions be considered separate. So for the CPA and CAR applications, that those be considered separately from the CUP. So if there's going to be a second, I would ask for a second on each of those motions.
Second.
Both of the motions? Which motion?
Yes. Both.
Okay. All right. So there's two motions on the table. Uh, it sounds like one to approve CPA and CAR and one to, um, approve the appeal of the CUP. Lot of stuff in there. Do you wanna speak to your motion, Councilmember Sted?
Okay, so I see error in the, I, I can see, uh, the error in the Planning and Zoning Commission decisions due to lack of substantial evidence supporting negative impacts to the airport regarding current economic or future growth opportunities. I also can understand, um, that, that we have several different maps in play and zone and comprehensive plans and, um, overlays and that, that I think also leads to, um, an arbitrary decision. I first wanna reiterate that the project won't be reliant on well water. The city requires a fifty year water assurance. We heard, so I can appreciate that when the, um, AIA was created in the nineteen nineties. But they were looking for balance between the density that was needed for our housing market at that time and for the use of the airport. Today, our housing needs dictate a, a new balance. Um, we heard testimony from the airport director stating that, um, our zoning code would better inform AIA than, um, the airport plan. Our current code supports density near activity centers, near transit corridors. So that we can allow people to live close to where they work and recreate and go to school and so that they're spending less time on the road. Okay, sorry, lots of notes here. We heard testimony that the, the FAA has strict guidelines. I actually wish they did, but I'm not seeing that in the language. I interpret it that they leave the decision to the policymakers in the cities. I can appreciate that not everybody wants to live near airport noise and also not everyone wants to live near a school or the botanical garden because of their concerts or because of the fire risk in the foothills. Some folks would love a home close to their community and near shopping and jobs. And that's why we try to allow a variety of housing options in our city. The commission expressed their lack of confidence in the conflicting supporting documents between code and comp plan and the AIA. And we're looking for counsel, looking to counsel for direction. Um, I would also like to ask staff to prioritize reviewing the AIA.
Councilmember Morales.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, um, first of all, I wanna thank everyone that's here tonight. Cause it's been a really long night and I'm sure you had better things to do, especially the mom of three that spoke. So thank you for caring about your neighborhood. And, um, you know, and yeah, and thank you for, um, for spending that time to, to share with us a little bit more about your neighborhood. Um, I spent many time, much time in my childhood in one acre lot areas. And so I, I feel familiar with it. I've seen those areas grow dramatically over the, the years, um, where there are larger buildings adjacent to those, those properties. Yeah, ultimately, I believe that planning and zoning did error in, um, denial of the, the CUP. I, I see, uh, a lack of, of specific, um, economic impacts, uh, to our airport. Um, I think that we entrust our leadership to do everything possible to make our airport the best. And I really appreciate them for doing those things because it makes it hard for us to have to work through this right now, right? And, um, and I also believe that, you know, that airport influence area, um, area is, is problematic as Planning and Zoning Commissioner Mooney noted in the prior hearing. Uh, we've noted tonight that it's clearly out of sync, that hasn't been reviewed as part of our modern zoning code. So we're looking at a number that was chosen, uh, in the late nineties, five units. Boise's grown dramatically, so five units back then meant something different than five units today does. You know, and so twenty eight may seem like a large jump from five, but look at Boise now compared to, to when that number was set. I am very interested in how we, aside from this, how we move forward with fixing this problem because it does seem like a problem that needs to be fixed, uh, before future applications put us back into this. And, and what those FAA compatibility guidelines are because just in some of my research before this, there were, there were documents from, from the FAA, but very old, talking about twenty five to forty units per acre being okay in certain areas nearby. And so we really need to identify what that is and update our plans. I would also just like to say that, um, you know, we have had examples of these maps being used a little differently. It feels arbitrary. And so I do think that there was error. Neighbors have noted a number of critical issues and really appreciate you bringing those before us because as was noted tonight, this wasn't traditional. We usually get to talk about how the developer has worked on the issues that neighbors bring to them and that staff bring to them. And we didn't get there before this, which is unfortunate. So it's kind of like we're seeing a draft that is not as well developed as we usually see up here. Um, and so I would echo, um, some of the conditions mentioned and expect that this project will, will look, um, a little bit different as it's, as it's brought, um, a little bit further if, if this motion passes. Um, so thank you for your time tonight and I will be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Halbert.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm gonna start with, uh, with the appeal. Um, I don't think the Planning and Zoning Commission made an error or the staff made an error. I think that we've got a clear, um, airport influence area overlay and this lies within that overlay. And so therefore to me, that isn't arbitrary very clearly in there and it's telling us that we have to limit the amount of density that we have in these types of areas and limit the amount of housing that we have in these types of areas. It does not mean that that policy shouldn't be looked at. It doesn't mean that that airport influence area shouldn't be reexamined or changed at some point, but it does mean that that's what exists right now. And that was the parameters within the decision that they made. And so I don't see them making an error in that decision. I think it is challenging, um, because I do think that this is a great spot for housing. And frankly, it's a great spot for dense housing. And in my head, I'm trying to figure out, can I thread the needle between listening to our largest experts on the FAA and the largest experts on the airport influence area, our director of our airport, um, also the National Guard and our staff and understand their expertise and bring those to the table while also trying to open up a door in the future for housing in this particular area. And so part of me was like, okay, well, maybe I can approve this and maybe I can deny this, but that doesn't really create a path forward for the developer either. The solution, you know, for me is that if they want to develop on this land, staff is telling them that they would, uh, be in support of an application that said twelve point five units per acre or four, whatever it was, um, to move forward right now. And so I think that that would be an option and it would be an option that is saying that it fits within what we would typically appeal or allow in a conditional use permit where it's not a drastic change, but a small change. Staff is telling us that that's what this, uh, conditional use permit is for. And so that would be an option for the developer or a developer to move forward with. Or the other option would be is that you wait and you wait for a policy change from the city that indicate that we would allow these types of things to happen. And that we would examine our airport influence area and see if this is a spot where it would allow to be. So I don't think it makes sense to try to thread the needle. At this point, I think that we've got an application that doesn't fit. Um, we've got a planning and zoning commission, uh, that didn't make an error. And so I won't be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Willis.
First of all, if I've ever done a U-turn on Vincent, I am so sorry.
Oh, I forgot to say that I have done a U-turn on Vincent. I sometimes teach classes close to CWI and I accidentally made a U-turn there. I wasn't the person who almost hit the person though, so it has happened.
I, I really appreciate everyone coming tonight. This is, um, this is where you live. This is your home. This is what you care about. This is your life and you've chosen to live there. And I'm always in awe of people that will take so much time to ensure that, that the community that they want is there for them. And, um, and you spent your Tuesday night with us. Uh, so thank you. From the developer side, I can tell that you have put your heart and soul into this. This means a lot to you. You have, you've bought bare ground that is very rare in Boise, especially in Phil. And, um, and you've worked really hard to try to, to find a way to make this work. There's a couple of things that I'd like to say, uh, just in general, that I think we could all, we can all agree. The antidote to lack of housing is housing and people need choices. They need lots of different places to live. Uh, you know, I've, just my, my own experience, I've lived in all sorts of housing. I've lived in apartments, I've lived in townhomes, I've lived in single family homes. Uh, that location is a great place for housing. That's why people live there. And we need more. It's next to a major thoroughfare and there's just a lot of benefits to that. I've always said that the, you know, city ordinances aren't the ten commandments. They're not written in stone. We can change them. They are meant to be revisited. They are meant to be revised. But this is a pretty major policy change. You know, we, a year ago, we did a zoning code where this room was filled for days, people testified. And this is exactly what people were afraid of. They were afraid that, um, that the zoning rewrite would plow density into areas that weren't clear. And I, I think we need to be careful here. I don't think planning a zoning was arbitrary. I think they knew. I, I think we're trying to thread a needle because we're so desperate for housing that we're not making, we're not able to make this work in the current setup that it is. And so I'm gonna vote no on the first motion. I'm gonna vote no on the second motion. I would prefer, now that the applicant has kind of heard where we're, we're coming from, that you come back with a new application, that you lower the height. You do lots of those things that are on that list, but I can't in good conscience vote for that motion without seeing it. So I'm gonna vote no.
Councilmember Halbert, did you have any comments on the, you didn't mention the appeal. Did you have any comments on the other applications?
Um, on, on the first two, I would like to see housing. I don't mind the amount of housing that's listed there, but I don't think that we can do that within the policies that we have that exist right now. Our policies have to change. Um, or our airport influence area needs to change, um, in order for us to allow that big of a jump in the housing. Um, part of me wanted to approve that and wait for the other thing to happen, but I still don't think that that creates a pathway forward. And so I think the pathway forward is to bring in another application or to wait until that change is, um, a policy change. And then we could revisit whether that would be allowed there or not. But until there's a policy change, okay, we've got an airport influence area saying no.
That's fine. I'm not trying to persuade you. The only thing I'd point out, just for clarity for all of council, is that the first two motions would preserve the airport influence overlay. Just wanna be clear about that. So I think there were clear errors and mostly on the part of Boise City Council. The, we invited this application. by providing for a conditional use permit process within the modern zoning code. We invited this and we also signaled support for this type of development with how we've treated other developments in the airport influence area. While those individual cases don't set a precedent, they are setting signals to how we want to see development. And we've sent a lot of signals about we want more housing, we want on undeveloped areas. We want it in places where that is close to MX zones so that the folks can support the businesses in those areas. And council also aired when we decided to punt on questions about the airport when we did the modern zoning code. And the policy decisions that planning and zoning was asking for council to make, we need to make those and we need to make those sooner than later. So I think we need to deal with that. I feel like reliance on the airport influence area overlay was an error. The reason for that is whenever we go to deal with this, we're going to have to rely on the NEM to inform us of what the AIA will look like. We're going to be taking data from the sound, when we have that data already available to us, to decide what zoning in those areas is going to look like. I feel like we were clear when we passed the modern zoning code what type of development we wanted. We wanted more houses. We wanted them in places like this. I feel like the motion gives broad latitude to staff to work with the applicant on putting a project here that is more consistent with the needs of the neighborhood. I would hope that staff feels that latitude in that motion to get to something that is more compatible with what the neighborhood is asking for. Also have concerns about how those impact fees could be used to improve areas like Vincent and ACHD within the sound of my voice. Please listen to these folks that have come here that want those impacts mitigated to their neighborhood. Finally, the only comment that I would add as far as the motion goes is I am not interested in requiring any types of mixed uses in this area. We did this for housing. If there are different design elements that could be incorporated to provide a better transition from the MX3 zone to the more residential, single-family neighborhoods, strongly supportive of that. But I will be supporting both motions. All right, will the clerk please call the roll on CUP 24-12?
Hallie Burton.
No.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
No.
Three in favor, two opposed, motion carries.
The clerk, please call the roll on CPA 24-1 and CAR 24-1?
Hallie Burton.
No.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
No.
Three in favor, two opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I think it was clear in the motion, by the motion maker, that we would like staff to come back and we would like to discuss the airport influence area and we'd like to pick up on some of the issues that we left off last year with the modern zoning code as it relates to the airport so that we can have more consistent standards going forward. So thank you for your time this evening. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.